Good evening, everyone. We will call the City Council meeting to order for Monday, May 18, 2015. First order of business is a roll call. Carleen.
Scott. Drew. Louis. Doyle. Wright. Estes. Nordstrom. Roberts. Wyffenbach. Laurenti. We have form.
Thank you. We will now have our invocation led by Pastor Craig Moore of First Assembly. You are welcome to participate, but not required.
Joshua Chapter 1 tells Joshua, God says, "Be strong and courageous and you will be prosperous and successful." So Heavenly Father, I just come before you and I ask, Lord, that in the same way that you spoke to Joshua as he's becoming a leader, speak to each and every one of these leaders of our city. Your word says pray for the peace and prosperity of the city, and so we pray, Lord, for this amazing city to have peace and to be prosperous. Pray your blessing upon Mayor Sam and each one of these City Council members. We ask, Lord, that you will give them wisdom, that they will see the vision that you have for the peace and prosperity of this city, God, and that you, Lord, will help us to get along, to have unity, to have a love for this city, Lord, that even allows us to be able to set aside our own personal agendas for the good of the vision that you have for us, God, for the city. We pray, Lord, that you will just let your presence be sensed in this place today. Lord, you are an amazing God. You desire for us to be in unity, to accomplish the things that you have for us. And so we just thank you. We pray your blessing on each individual that is here today, upon our City Council and our mayor. Just bless their socks off. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
We're now on to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to tonight's agenda? We'll go to Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull item number 38 and put it just before item number 63. It concerns the Rush Hockey League and the water supply, and I think it would be better or beneficial to put it right before so that as we talk about both those things, we can get a clear picture of where we're going with that.
All right. Very good. Anything else?
Move is through. Amen.
We have motion by Estes and a second by Laurenti to move approval with the one amendment. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We now have several awards and recognitions, and first up will be Pastor Larry and Dale Salway, if you want to come up, please. It's an absolute privilege to recognize Pastor Larry Salway and his better half Dale for all they have done for our community, and they have been nominated by their two Ward Four City Council members for Citizen of the Month, and we'll start with Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Little history. Born on the Pine Ridge Reservation and raised on the Rosebud Reservation, Larry's early life was one of great happiness, but also great poverty, with limited educational opportunities. Overcoming these obstacles, Larry completed high school, attended Brainerd Indian Bible School and the Northwest Indian Bible School. Upon graduation, he pastored on the Rosebud and Pine Ridge Indian Reservations of South Dakota. He planted three churches and traveled extensively as an evangelist across Canada, the United States, Mexico, Guatemala, and Belize, speaking in mostly indigenous churches. Always bivocational, Larry has worked in many fields to support his family, including tribal judge of the Rosebud Sioux Tribe. Larry E. Salway received his undergraduate degree from USD in Criminal Justice and attended law school at Arizona State University for one year. Larry then transferred to the Graduate School of Social Work at the Arizona State University. Larry received his Master's of Social Work degree at Arizona State University and became a licensed clinical social worker and licensed independent substance abuse counselor in 1990. He worked for Indian Health Services for many years and was selected to serve on the Critical Response Team following the Red Lake, Minnesota school shooting in 2005. Most recently, Larry served as the post-traumatic stress disorder traumatic brain injury specialist for active duty troops at Ellsworth Air Force Base.
Larry has taught as a professor on three occasions. Lakota language at the University of South Dakota, Vermillion, Director of Human Services at Nazarene Indian Bible College, Albuquerque, and social work classes at Ogallala Lakota College, Rapid City. While living in Arizona for 19 years, Larry continued to minister among the native tribes in the Southwest as a church planter, evangelist, and district superintendent of the Southwest Indian District of the Church of the Nazarene. Larry and his wife Dale and son Eric answered the call to return to his people, the Lakota of Western South Dakota, in late 2005. Larry and Dale are currently co-pastors of the Hisappa New Life Church in North Rapid City. Both are ordained ministers with the Wesleyan Church. Their son Eric also assists with their ministry. Their ministry spreads across Western South Dakota into numerous native communities through extensive outreach events. Larry currently also serves as Director of Wesleyan Native Ministries, Assistant Superintendent for the Northwest Church of the Northwest District of the Wesleyan Church, the Director of Hisappa New Life Native Ministries, and the Wesleyan Church. Larry and Dale Salloway have four adult children in Arizona and one teenager still at home. Larry is an avid reader and loves to swim, he can strum his guitar. We are so grateful Larry is a part of our community and we are proud of the service he's doing. Thank you, Larry, and keep it up. You're welcome.
On behalf of the Native American community, we really humbly appreciate and accept this award. There are other people more deserving than I, my wife and I and son, but we just thank you for this. Thank you very much.
And thank you for your service. In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we are very pleased to present the May 2015 Veteran of the Month recognition to Michael Green.
Michael was born in Minot, North Dakota, but was raised in Rapid City, and both of his parents still reside together in Rapid City. Michael is currently serving with the South Dakota National Guard and has been serving for over 14 years. Michael was deployed with the 313th Medical Company in Iraq in 2004. During this time, he did see combat. In honor of Michael's many accomplishments, he has received numerous awards and medals to include Army Commendation, Army Achievement, Iraq Campaign Medal, as well as the Global War on Terrorism Medal. Michael has been part of the Rapid City Vet Center staff as a work study for almost three years. He has shown dedication to serving his fellow veterans, often going above and beyond assisting with transportation, benefits, and record-keeping. Michael has shown his strong sense of pride and ownership when it comes to seeing the day-to-day activities of the Veterans Center, trying diligently to see the comfort of the veterans and their family members.
Michael married his wife Candace in 2013 in Big Springs, Texas. They love Rapid City and enjoy their life here. He has recently received a promotion with the VA as the Rapid City Veterans Center's newest office manager. On top of his dedication to the Vet Center, he is a full-time student at Black Hill State as a senior working towards his Bachelor's in History Education. His deep love and loyalty for his country makes him an excellent candidate for Veteran of the Month. His example of service makes him deserving of this honor, and we extend our gratitude. Thank you very much.
I just want to thank all the other veterans out there, and I know every one of us are very deserving of this award also, and thank you, everybody, for your support for all the veterans out there.
Jerry Reichert and his family, you're welcome to come up. We're very proud of Battalion Chief Reichert and his many years of service to our community, 25 years, and no, he is not retiring. Not sure if he'll give 25 more or not, but our longest-term city employees, 44 years, so that means you can do another 19, right? And with that, I'd like to recognize our fire chief, Mike Maltever, who has a few words to say.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and again, thanks, everyone, tonight for allowing us opportunities to recognize certainly one of our bravest here in the city. I share probably some pride with the gentleman standing over here to our furthest left, who is retired Deputy Chief Dean Reichert, who also served 34 years with the city. So you can see, we have actually not only a second, but third generation Reichert, who has served the Rapid City Fire Department, and it's been an honor to serve alongside of Jerry. Jerry and I and the next employee we're going to recognize all started the same year and competed throughout the years for different promotions, and fortunately Jerry or Matt didn't want to ever be fire chief, so by default, I ended up to be fire chief and they were battalion chief and section chief, so they stopped. But anyway, Jerry's dedication to the job is probably, I wouldn't say unmatched, because we've got some really dedicated employees, but this guy shows up every third day, and from the time he gets out of the time he leaves, he's looking for opportunities to make the department better, which in turn makes us a better department to go out and serve the community in. So hats off to Jerry and Brenda, I know your many sacrifices letting Jerry run off. Not only does he serve the city here every third day, when he goes home to his house just outside of Hill City, he also serves the local volunteer fire department. And again, just to show the nature of his service, he doesn't get enough in the city every third day in his busy we are, he's got to go home and do it in his off time. So, thank you, Chief, for sharing your son with us, and Brenda, and congratulations, Jerry.
Matt Culberson, please come up. This is the second 25th anniversary that we're celebrating tonight in the Rapid City Fire Department. We're very pleased to recognize Matt Culberson for his many years of dedicated service, and he's not retiring either.
A lot of the same comments for this individual standing next to me. Again, we started at the same time, and Matt and I and Jerry all shared great careers and, again, competed for these jobs. Once you reach a certain rank in the department, all this insignia changes from a silver to a gold, and there's some symbolism behind that in both of these individuals, and when they've got to this level, they've displayed leadership, integrity, loyalty to the organization, and, again, that service to the community that we're looking for. Certainly Matt's that guy, he's got a wealth of education and background in the department. He currently is serving in our training division, he's our section training chief for the training of all the firefighters in Rapid City, also serves out at Western Dakota to help us with the partnership we have with the Fire Science Program with the Technical School. Again, we have a second generation, I don't know what your dad did, John, but a second generation, his dad, all the way over here to our right, served for the peer fire department as position of fire chief. Also, Matt's brother is sitting out, I don't know which one's better-looking, but Jason's out in the crowd, he's also our medical section chief, so a lot of service in this family as well, not only our community, but communities throughout our region. So Matt does an outstanding job, and, again, thanks to Becky for your sacrifice as well,
And now we have a proclamation for Cholectal Cancer Awareness Day, and if Eric Eikowski and Dr. Norden Company would come up, please, along with Council President Jerry Wright. Jerry, where art thou? I'm not poisonous. It's hard for me to talk about the topic of cancer without being a little bit emotional. My mother is a breast cancer survivor, and seven years ago, I lost my sister Bonnie at age 27 to a rare form of a cancerous sarcoma, which there was no history of in our family. And I think it's important to recognize that as teenagers, we think that we are immune to car accidents, and then as we get older, we think we are immune to cancer, and it is important to know that none of us in this room are immune. Screening and awareness is very important. And with that, I have a proclamation on behalf of the City Council and our community. Whereas colorectal cancer is the third most commonly diagnosed cancer and second most common cause of cancer deaths, come on up, Jerry, you can help me with this, for men and women in the United States, and colorectal cancer affects men and women equally, and...
Whereas every three minutes, someone is diagnosed with colorectal cancer, and every 10 minutes, someone dies from the colorectal cancer. While the vast majority of colon cancer deaths can be prevented through proper screening and early detection, and whereas only 39% of colorectal cancer patients have their cancers detected at an early stage, the survival rate of individuals who have early-stage colorectal cancer is 90%, but is only 10% were diagnosed after a spread. Whereas if the majority of people in the United States age 50 or older were screened regularly for colorectal cancer, death rate from this disease could plummet by up to 70%. Whereas African-Americans, Hispanic-Americans, Asian-Americans, American Indians, Alaskan natives are significantly less likely to be screened for colorectal cancer compared to whites, and whereas colorectal cancer is preventable, treatable, and beatable in most cases, therefore, I, Sam Quaker, and Mayor of the City of Rapid City, do hereby embrace the shared goal to reach 80% screening for colorectal cancer by 2018 and proclaim May 18, 2015, as Cholectal Cancer Awareness Day.
I'm Eric Eikowski with the American Cancer Society, and I'm here just with some of our partners here in the Rapid City area that are pledge signers of the 80 by 2018 initiative. At my right is Rick Strakularis with the Western Providers Physician Organization. Just to my left is Paul Clements, VP of Rapid City, or, sorry, Regional Health. To his left is Carla Brudico, she's an American Cancer Society volunteer. Dr. Alan Norden, I think most everybody knows Dr. Norden in the room, he's an American Cancer Society board member. Doris Ann Werlinger is an AARP South Dakota Executive Council Committee member. Dr. Bruce Jones is, or Dr., sorry, Dr. Jones with Rapid City Medical Center is a strong supporter of our initiative. Richard Masso from the Great Plains Travel Chairman's Health Board. That's just some of our folks in the Rapid City area that are helping us increase cancer or colorectal cancer awareness in Western South Dakota. So thank you.
I'm a cancer survivor. A year ago, I was a male being treated for lymphoma, and I want to encourage all of our community, do not ignore the signs and warnings of cancer, to get regular checkups and to work with their doctor to prevent the horrible disease that can happen. I ask also for our community to support the American Cancer Society in their fundraising and research, because for that reason, I'm alive, and many of us are survivors. Thank you, and I think we need to get behind this, and on June 12th is the Walk Relay for Life, and there's other events going on. Please participate and support your American Cancer Society research and pay attention to your health. Do not be afraid.
And now we have some Historic Preservation Awards. Sean Kroll, if you could come up, along with Gene Keslov.
Historic preservation in Rapid City is a way of remembering all of those that have come before us. And it's the first recipient of the Norm Nelson Award. Norm Nelson was a man who was a historic preservationist and a Rapid City historian and definitely a character, and for several years, we've given out an award called the Norm Nelson Preservation Award. And the remembrance of all these, I was talking with Allison Hansen earlier, you can come on up if you'd like. They own a home in the historic district, and Dan and Allison Hansen have done a lot of work to their house in this last year. of work to their house in this last year. And she was telling me that the house had been in her husband's family for 80 years and she was hoping that all the work that they had done would help bring it into the future as well. So, thank you very much for all of the work that you did and for helping maintain our history.
On behalf of my husband, we'd just like to thank everyone who was involved. We're really honored by this award and thank you.
Also with historic preservation, sometimes buildings are used for a different purpose than what they were originally used for. And we have Al Luhan and Tom Willock here. Come on up. Al did a lot of the work, but Tom was the one that bought the house and did an adaptive reuse and turned a house into a business. So, for the Norm Nelson Preservation Award for adaptive reuse of a residential property, thank you very much for your work that you've done for us. Do we have any representatives from? Did you guys want to picture Tom and Al? And do we have any representatives from the garage here this evening? Oh, right back there. Some people may notice the garage has been reinvented and reused. It was an automotive service center, but now it's been turned into multiple office spaces. So, for adaptive reuse in commercial, the garage receives the Norm Nelson Award. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, and congratulations to all of our award winners tonight. We now have an executive session. This is to consult with legal counsel regarding item 154 on the agenda and pending litigation per SDCL 1-25-2 subsection 3. And for those of you who are watching and might not have access to the agenda, item 154 is appeal of the Planning Commission's decision of a request by Epic Outdoor Advertising for a conditional use permit to replace an off-premise sign generally described as being located at 3425 Sturgis Road. Joel, is there anything to add? Okay. Do we have a motion to go into executive session? Motion by Wright, second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We are in executive session.
We have a motion to come out of executive session. We have a motion by Wright and a second by Scott. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I would like to, if there's no objections on the part of the, any of the council members, if we could, could we act on item 154 now? If we have, we've just had executive session, our memories are fresh, and if we go through the entire agenda and we get to that item, we may run into issues. So I would, if that's proper, does anybody have an objection to that?
Mr. Mayor.
So...
No objection. I'll just say the converse could be true, too. We take 154 right now, we may not have any brain juice left for the rest of the agenda. I'm just saying.
We only have two speaker request forms on item 154. Well, let's go ahead and move it up. So we're now going to declare a public hearing open for item 154. And we have two speaker request forms. We'll first recognize Lisa Modric. Lisa, good evening, on item 154.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council. It's always a pleasure to be here before you. It's also a great pleasure to be a citizen of the United States of America, and that I have the freedom of speech, and that I'm exercising that this afternoon. And I plan on exercising that for as long as I live in America. And with that, I wanted to share with you why we're here today, or why I'm here today. The citizens of Rapid City made an outstanding vote of 66 percent to say, "We need regulations. We need your attention." We all know and we can see what the attention is, what comes before you. This is a same game, different day. In 2007, the City Council did a pretty amazing job with a resolution. And the resolution was to create a guidance and a vision for the city of Rapid City. And you're in the planning phases of our future. Four years later, the resolution was turned upside down, and the citizens came before you and said, "We got another problem here. It's not going away. It's not getting any better." So it went to vote because it's a tough one. This is a tough issue. It's tough before you, and it's tough for the community. We want regulation that's reasonable, and we want regulation that works for both the industry and also for the community. So with this issue that came before you because of the Planning Commission and some of the stipulations that they had based on where the current sign code is, we needed to say, "Hey, let's all take a step back." Sioux Falls is in the middle of a moratorium because of that, because they were acting forward and then found that they needed to take a step back and reconsider what was going on. And you may need to do the same. You may have the option, you have the option, of course, because you've got a permit that's already been recommended by Planning Commission to move forward and approve that permit. But you also have a sign code that is upside down. It's upside down again, and has been turned upside down every four years and has been for decades. You're in your fourth year, and here you are, and you'll be here again in another four, and another four. So as we're looking at this today, you need to take that vision and see what's going to happen forward. What will happen with the conversion of this digital, into digital from a legal, non-conforming sign, and I hope you've all had a chance to drive by and take a look at what you're looking at, you're going to open up the door, Pandora's box, to over 200 permitted poles in the community of Rapid City, that most of them have two sides on them, making 400 digital signs. If that's the future that you see for Rapid City, it may not be the future of what others are going to see. And you could have people exit. That is a disturbance in a community. There's also safety. There's, along with the aesthetics that go as well. You're in an area that's a neighborhood, and you're also in the entrance, another entrance, I'm going to say another entrance, because we've all drive into Rapid City, and we see what our welcoming signs are. And they are stacked horizontally, back-to-back signs. So once again, we have an entrance that's before you to say, "Let's turn another one to digital, and let's see what happens." The company that has come before you as well, he doesn't stay within code. We've all witnessed horses running in the gap. And if he doesn't stay in code, perhaps you need to consider, are we working with a decent company? Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. We'll now go to Mike Kwasny, also on this item. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. My name is Mike Kwasny. I'm here as a citizen who voted for some control. I'm here to ask you to represent me. Thank you for your time this evening. I have three things to bring before you, to your attention, to discuss with you. First, the First Amendment gives me, us, the right to meet and discuss our feelings on any matters with your, with our elected officials, to discuss in an open forum anything that affects our future. As you may or may not have heard, Mr. Casey would prefer we not oppose him on this matter. Not discuss with any of you our thoughts on this matter, or what we feel he has done throughout this process, going as far as to having his legal representatives, and six of us, a letter asking us to cease and desist. Just before coming here, I had, I heard on the news, he was asking, asked for input from somebody on safety. He was going around and asking. He didn't ask me, and he didn't ask anybody that I know here. He had concerns, and nobody would come up and say, tell him what they were. He also told another reporter that he didn't send this letter. And I have the letter here, if you want to see it, so. Next, I would like to ask a favor of you, our council members. Could I have just seven of you stand? Just a favor to me. If seven of you could represent me for just a minute on something? No? Raise your hands. Do anything to represent seven people out of 11? Thank you, Richie.
Go ahead, Mike. Would you please continue? We have several more speaker request forms.
My point, that seven out of 11 is roughly the percentage of people that ask for some kind of representation, some, something to be done with the sign code. As we move forward, we need to really consider that. That's something that's very important. The last thing, to truly find out what can be done, I feel is important to have a moratorium, to give time for all of you to determine the future of how billboards need to fit into all the plans I have seen presented by City Hall, to truly understand where digital signs should or should not be. So many people have worked hard on a master plan for our city's future. I would ask you to consider this moratorium on any future conversions to digital. While by law, you may not be able to do anything on the billboard before you tonight, with the exception of maybe some stipulations, I do feel there are some concerns that need to be addressed. If you do not do a moratorium, tomorrow, you could be overwhelmed with requests for conversions to digital. Summing up, stop all activities with a moratorium, fix the codes, keeping in mind what your community wants and what you can do, and please, don't get caught up in what you are being told you can't do. Again, thank you for your time and talents.
Thank you, Mike. We'll now recognize Mike Sabers, also on item 154.
Mayor, my client and I are not going to speak. We believe it is properly before the council.
Okay. We'll now recognize Deb Jensen, also on this item. Good evening, Deb.
Good evening, Mayor Quaker, and members of the City Council. My name is Deborah Jensen. And last month, I was among several citizens who came before the Pennington County Planning Commission scrutinizing a conditional use permit request from EBC Outdoor Advertising. During the discussion, several Planning Commissioners expressed frustration that their hands were tied, and that permit was approved. Afterward, some urged us to appeal their decision, hoping for real-life answers to some of their questions. The current sign code stipulates that light cannot be a nuisance to adjoining properties and residences. A few weeks ago, I walked two neighborhoods: Sturgis Road, where the digital sign is not yet installed, and La Crosse, where there are three digital signs. Along Sturgis Road, there are many multifamily homes and apartment buildings and a few businesses. The tenants I spoke with were unaware. Across the street, business owner David Smith does not own the property and did not realize what the small posted sign requesting a conditional use permit was even about. He did make clear, though, he is not anti-billboard, and in fact, he does purchase ad space. But he is concerned that a 288-foot digital board will be a distraction away from his small business. On La Crosse Street, I spoke with two men at a car dealership. They like the digital billboard located on their property because it is so bright at night, they no longer have to pay for security lighting. And across the street, Cheryl Fisher looks out her kitchen window, and she sees messages from the digital sign reflecting back from her neighbor's living room window. She says she doesn't need yard lights either. At first, she said she was annoyed, but she is now used to the billboard. But she does say she doesn't want another, and she does not want one larger installed. Further up on La Crosse, two maintenance workers at the Dakota Pines say when the most-wanted posters pop up, drivers slow way down to see the picture. The men insist that they have witnessed rear-end collisions at a few locations. They want the pictures up longer. Now, based on these testimonials, abundant evidence and information, I urge you to add the following stipulations. Messages should be held a minimum of eight seconds. Ensure that the automatic dimming devices be dimmed further than current guidelines based on the noted impact to the residents. The billboard from side to side, top to bottom, be no larger than 250 square feet. That's the size of the current... That's the size of the current static billboard. You, Mayor Quaker, your city planning, your legal staff, and many of you, most of you, maybe all of you on the council, want and certainly have been trying to find a solution to the proliferation of these billboards for some time. And I know that you want the best for Rapid City, as we all do. Your decision tonight will set a precedence for all other off-premise digital billboard requests until this sign code can be updated. Now, as a council, you have the right to add stipulations, just as I have the First Amendment right to speak before you, even though Mr. Casey of Epic Outdoor Advertising sent me and five others a letter intending to sue each of us following our scrutiny of his permit request. Again, I thank all of you for allowing me to speak.
We do not have any more speaker request forms on items, on item 154. Have I missed anyone? Public comment is now closed for that item. And by the way, we didn't have any general public comment items tonight either, so just in case anybody knows, we didn't just skip over that. We did not have any request forms submitted. So we'll now proceed with debate and a motion on item 154. We'll first go to Alderman John Roberts. Alderman Roberts.
I didn't realize that I'd hit that, but I will make a motion to approve. Thank you.
We have a motion by Roberts to approve. Do we have a second? A second by Steve Laurenti. And let's have, let's have somebody read, it's been a while since we've heard this read into the record, so Amanda Scott, would you read this into the record for us? Item 154. We already have a motion, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 54 is to appeal of the Planning Commission's decision of a request by Epic Outdoor Advertising for a conditional use permit to replace an off-premise sign generally described as being located at 3425 Sturgis Road. A motion has been made and seconded, and I believe that this is supposed to be approval with stipulations, if that's okay with the motion maker and the second.
Is that the intent of the motion maker and the second? With stipulations. Do you still have the four, if you'd like it?
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask the city attorney a question or two, please? Thank you. Joel, when this was brought before the Planning Commission, Carla Cushman did a wonderful job, you know, laying out the current code to the Planning Commissioners, and that this permit fit all the requirements that went through the Planning Department. And Carla did say that based on the current status of our case concerning Lamar against the city of Rapid City, that this didn't have any specific reason to be denied, because it fits all of the requirements. But there were some stipulations. I believe, though, that the stipulations were even met, based on what the representative from the sign company had said, that the billboard does dim, that the billboard would be dimming. Is there any way that we have of qualifying that or testing that? Is there anything that's done?
Yes, we have regulations about the hold times and things, that's how fast they can scroll through, and they would have to comply with all of that. So there are, there are regulations for digital billboards, even though digital, we're not allowed under the initiated ordinance until essentially the decision of Judge Vikin in the Lamar case. So there are regulations for digital billboards, and they would have to follow those.
And if a citizen, freedom of speech, freedom of action, were to time these billboards, is it a code enforcement issue that they would pursue if the, if the messages do not stay static for eight seconds? I mean, if they've got a recorded that they're tracking them and they're less than that and they're in violation, how do they go about filing?
That's correct. It would be a code enforcement issue.
So they would just have to notify the city code enforcement? And then how, what kind of testing, or is there certification that the sign companies need to bring forward that show that their dimming mechanisms are working functionally once a year or anything?
No, I don't think there's any requirement that once a year, they provide proof of that.
So it's just relied on when they're installed and the signage company stating on record that they have a dimming mechanism in place?
Correct. If we got a complaint on brightness, we could go and probably would pursue it more closely.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I think that's all the questions I have at this time. I'll yield the floor.
I just want to make sure that what we're, the motion is to approve with stipulations the request by Epic Outdoor Advertising for the conditional use permit, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alderman Ron Weifelbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to direct the same question that Jared did, because the way I'm reading this is that this isn't, we're voting on the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision.
No. The, the recommendation at the bottom of 154 is, is consider the Planning Commission's recommendation of approval with stipulations. The motion is to approve with stipulations and allow the board. And that's the motion maker's intent, and that's the seconders' intent.
That's why, and that's what I, I had actually buzzed in until Alderman Roberts clarified, and then I think he clarified that it's not about approval of the appeal. It's about approval, either you can approve the, the decision of the Planning Commission with the stipulations, or you can deny the, overturn the decision of the Planning Commission, or you could potentially impose additional reasonable stipulations based on the application.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we were clear on what we were voting on, because I was, I had the.
So a vote yes is to approve the board with stipulations.
The stipulation's approved by the Planning Commission.
Right.
Okay, that's what I needed to understand.
Clear on that?
Yeah, if you just let me retain the floor for a couple minutes, I'd appreciate it. I had, I had the luxury of sitting on the council at the time that all this conversation had started. And I think that there's a lot of, there was a lot of opportunity. I think some of the opportunities have been missed now to realign some of the billboards in our city. People weren't unwilling to have that conversation, for whatever reason it may be. The other thing is, I'm not sure, and I'll, I'll pose this question to Joel, is how many complaints have we had on the brightness of these particular billboards? I mean, if it becomes an issue, we can address that. Sometimes there's this opinion of people's opinions, and the people, I, we had legal counsel once that told us that we could do whatever we want as a council. And that's incorrect. That's incorrect. And the reason is, is because then you would have mob rule and majority rule, and then you would have, you'd have difficulties. And it's important for the people of Rapid City to understand, this sign code has been vetted, and there's a lot of things that held. The brightness held, the motion held, and there was a couple other things that held. One thing that didn't hold was the fact that we were banning digital billboards. The judge has ruled, I'm not sure what the verbiage of it is, is that we can't ban digital billboards, and we've in place a digital billboard ban. And he ruled that that's not possible. Well, then you people say, "Well, the people voted on it." Well, yeah, the people vote on a lot of stuff that gets overruled by the law, because if you didn't, then the minority of people would never be, they would never have their rights either. I mean, it would, it would be a mob rule thing, and most people would vote for it, and then you would have lawlessness. You would have no laws. People could, you know, they could gather signatures for whatever they wanted and get a vote on it, and, and then force it onto someone else. So I think that this is realistic, that we're passing this today. I don't think our sign code needs to be overhauled. I don't think, I don't represent anybody up here. I represent the people of this fine city at any given time. Anybody wants to call me, I've had, I've had conversations with both sides of the people on this, and I respectfully have disagreed. I think that there was an opportunity that we could eliminate a lot of the, the old cruddy billboards that we have, and unfortunately, we've missed that opportunity. Unless we can come to the table again and figure it out again, if we have the willingness of my colleagues here that I didn't have before, to sit down and have a communication with these guys and figure out a way to get rid of them. These guys do not want to have these old billboards. I mean, it's not profitable to them, it's not sightly to the city, but we forced them into a position to keep them by banning other particular billboards. People may disagree with my opinion, I understand, but I feel it necessary to tell my opinion so the people that elected me understand my position. And right now, the judge has ruled that we had a ban on these digital billboards. He's not going to allow that to happen. It's versus, it's in conflict with state law right now. I guess if we change the state law, if state law changes, then those things can change. So it's not like we haven't done our due diligence up here. The city has spent, litigation in this matter has been $300,000. The city has a $75,000 deductible that they had to meet. If I can, if I voted to appeal this, and then I would have to go to my, my citizens in my ward in my city and say, "Listen, even though the judge ruled this way, I disagreed with him, so I'm going to spend more of your money fighting this." So these are other things, the other side of the fence, that we have to be concerned about. I don't think that, if some of the people on the Planning Commission had their hands tied, they could have came to the mayor, he would have answered their questions for them. We have legal counsel here would have answered their questions for them. I, I just, I, I'm, I just am befuddled by the continuance of these items. I think it's, it's, it's fair, the judge has ruled. I think we'll live with it and move on. I don't think anything needs to be rewritten, redone. If we have some problems that aren't being adhered to, we have code enforcement, just like everybody else deals with in the city. Thank you.
To briefly go to our city attorney. Joel, can you briefly identify for us the areas that the city won on First Amendment claim? Would you go through that list briefly for us?
You know, I, we won on the constitutional claims that arose out of it, which also likely is going to cause us to prevail on what's called the 1984 section, cause of action in the Civil Rights Act, that could have resulted in paying Lamar's attorney fees. So really, the issues related to the sign credits, the takings, the freedom of speech, all of those issues we were successful on, but the one we were not was on the, the prohibition on the digital billboards. And then the other issue of the spacing was not resolved, and that was, that issue was tried to the court in the end of November of last year, has been briefed and is now, we're now waiting a decision on that.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Everyone understands it. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Again, we had no general public comment tonight. Did I miss anyone? No? Okay. Very good. Public comment is now open for items six through 57, with the exception of 38, which was moved in front of item 63. I do not have any speaker request forms for items six through 57. Have I missed anyone? Six through 57. Public comment is now closed for items six through 57. Any council members like to remove items for separate consideration? Alderman Darla Drew.
Item 52.
Item 52. Chad Lewis.
Sorry, Ms. Mayor. Uh, yeah, item number 41.
Item 41. Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 36, 39, 42, 49, and 53.
36, 39, 41, 42, 49, 52, and 53. We have a motion to approve the balance. We have a motion by Laurenti, second by Lewis. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on item number 36, and Amanda, you can read this into the record for us. Alderman Amanda Scott, 36.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 36 is to authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign a covenant agreement between the city of Rapid City and Cozer Enterprises LLC for a sewer main construction cost reimbursement. And I'd like to ask Mr. Dale Teck a question, if I may, Mayor?
May.
Thank you. Dale, if you wouldn't mind, I did, I wasn't able to attend the Public Works meeting last week, but I did send an email to Terry Wolster Storff, and he indicated you would be here tonight. And Mike, the question I had posed was, was this typical? And his response was, no, it's not typical. Could you please explain why this is coming before us, if this is a non-typical covenant?
I most certainly can. The agreement with the Cozer entity is to extend sanitary sewer along Commerce Road and tie into an existing sewer that was installed in the early 1990s under Deadwood Avenue that would serve this property. As the entity was investigating, constructing a building at the site, their only choice for existing sanitary sewer was to put in an onsite lift station and tear up a good portion of the road to put a service line down the road. That really was not a long-term, good solution for them. They estimated they'd have about $30,000 into that, their own individual thing there. So we got together, thought of some solutions. This is the best solution that we come up with, and it works for everybody. And in the long term, it'll save them money. It will provide sanitary sewer also to two other parties.
And, and thank you, Dale. And I want to congratulate your department for working with this. It is atypical, and, and I know a lot of times, City Hall gets a lot of complaints about the red tape, and this one actually worked to the benefit of our citizens, and I'm glad we were able to, to strike a compromise. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'll yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded. Do we have a motion? Motion by Lewis, second by Doyle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 39. Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 39 is to approve the policy regarding replacement or reimbursement of the damaged sprinkler systems within the public right-of-way. I make a motion to approve, and I'd like to retain the floor.
Motion by Scott, second by Wright, and you have the floor.
Thank you. And Mayor, may I ask Mr. Dale Teck a question?
You may.
Thank you. Again, Dale, I'm basically would just would like you to explain to the audience, because there was a lot of discussion why this policy went back and was reviewed, and could you just go ahead and outline it just for the public record? Because it may not be as important right now to people, but I know come the fall, when the construction season starts winding up and everything gets, you know, reburied into the ground, people with sprinkler systems in the right-of-way may want to know that this has been improved.
Most certainly. A little history, back in the early 90s, about 20 years ago, there was a policy adopted by a city council regarding people that have installed sprinkler systems in the public right-of-way. If there was a city project that came along and disturbed those systems, the policy was, the contractor would salvage as best they could the system and give it back to the property owner. They'd have to come in later and, and install it on their own nickel. We've patterned the new policy after what Sioux Falls does. They've worked with it for a number of years. If there is a sprinkler system in the public right-of-way, we're making sure we give the property owner plenty of notice that, hey, a project's coming. Get your sprinkler person that does the work on your sprinkler to remove the system. We'll do our project, have, and then the sprinkler company can come back in and replace the system or put it back to the way it was, and the city will pay for that. You know, we've got ordinances that says it's the landowner's responsibility to maintain the public right-of-way in front of their home. This is a good faith effort in, in keeping those greenways green, if you will.
Thank you, Dale. I yield the floor, Mayor.
Any further discussion on this item, on item 39? Richie Nordstrom. Alderman Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to especially thank staff for working up this policy, reconsidering it from the old one, and, and I think the people in my neighborhood really appreciate it, and the people near my neighborhood also appreciate it. So thanks to the staff for coming up with this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 41.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 41 is to acknowledge the discussion on the code enforcement issue of 3835 Canyon Lake Drive. I'll make the motion to approve that acknowledgement or acknowledge the discussion, and I'd like to retain the floor.
We have a motion by Scott, second by Laurenti, and you have the floor. And it's a motion to acknowledge.
Motion to acknowledge.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, I apologize for not attending the Public Works Committee meeting last week. This was brought forward, and there was a lot of discussion. When I streamed it, the comments I wanted to make on it is that it looked like an octopus with like 100 tentacles. There were so many pieces to, when we're talking about a complaint that's filed with code enforcement and how code enforcement goes about doing things. And so I did want to go ahead and acknowledge the discussion that had occurred, but I believe Alderman Wright was trying to bring up or start, and, and so I, I don't know if we have to wait or if we can consider it the next Public Works meeting or whatever, to us, discussion with staff to see if it's working, if it's not working, what their obstacles are, what we really need to take a look at this in order to improve the process. When we talk about code enforcement, you've got two neighbors that are basically have a difference of opinion. And it could very well be as easy as that their lawn is And it could very well be as easy as that their lawn is mowed to six inches and the other one is mowed to three inches, and the person who mows their lawn down to three inches believes anything over six or five inches is too long. And that's the difference of opinion that the code enforcement officers have to deal with and the city staff has to deal with, is trying to negotiate and try to make that habitable for everyone. And I'm just using grass because, I don't know if you've noticed, but there's been a lot of rain, and the grass is growing. So getting people out to mow their lawns is going to be huge during the next couple weeks. But code enforcement deals with a lot of other things, too. People like to collect treasures. Okay? There's a few pieces of junk in my backyard, but my point is, they're treasures to me. So people like to collect treasures, and one person's opinion of a treasure could be another person's opinion of a piece of junk that needs to be removed. And then it becomes down to a question of public safety or public health. And code enforcement at the public works committee meeting last week was describing that a lot of times, there are some properties that they just can't see from the public right-of-ways, and they have no rights to get on personal or people's property. If the property is owned by an individual, that's their property that's on the other side of the right-of-way. So I believe Alderman Wright, I think city staff and a few people got their feathers ruffled, thinking that he was berating them. I didn't take it as a berating. I took it as, if you need help, if this needs to be relooked at, then I think we need to get together with a group and have a discussion and kind of take a look at it to see if we can improve the process. So thank you, Mayor, for indulging me. I didn't have an opportunity to speak last week, I just wanted to get that on the record. I yield the floor.
Alderman Jerry Wright.
Thank you, Amanda. I agree with you. The intent there was to begin conversation on how we can improve the process, and for instance, if, who has to initiate a complaint and so forth. And I would like to see further discussion at the committee level and maybe off-committee with the staff and appropriate people, so we get the system better and get the people that do the job, enforcement, or not enforcement, but support that they need, but also make it easier and clearer for our constituents in how the process works and make it more effective. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? We have a motion to acknowledge on item 41. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 42.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 42 is to acknowledge the recommendation on the alley access located south of Clearview Lane in the 1100 block of Jackson Boulevard. And I'm not really sure what the recommendation is, so I'd like to yield the floor and see what the recommendation was.
Alderman Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'd like to make a simple motion, and I'm going to retain the floor.
Go ahead.
So I can make a motion to put up a sign that simply says, please do not block the alleyway.
We have a motion to put up a sign that says, do not block.
No, please, please do not block the alleyway. That's the.
Okay. With the please in front, okay?
I don't know if I have a second or not, so.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Jerry Wright to put a please do not block.
Please do not block the alleyway. And the reason for my motion is this, this has been through a lot of discussion publicly, and we've basically, as a city, backed out of it. I can understand that people don't want to get, take sides with business owners, whatever. I'm just simply saying, it might go a long way to simply have a sign that says, please don't block the alleyway, not you can't block the alleyway, not you're going to get towed, not, you know, trying to cause any issues between the neighbors, just a simple reminder to be up there for the patrons of your business, that would just simply remind them that they are blocking access to other businesses. It's not going to be a, you know, like, most signs are pretty directing and they're kind of threatening somewhat. This would just be a simple reminder that this is a access point, something like that. Just an acknowledgement of the businesses at the other end who have obviously kind of thrown their hands up, because they, no one's really too, you know, keen to help them out, so that's all my motion's for.
Let's go to our city engineer, Dale Tech. Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. The city utilizes what's called the MUTCD for signage of public right-of-ways and roads. Unfortunately, there's no guidance to put the word please in front of a sign. If it's to be enforceable, it just should say, no parking. So we can certainly put whatever sign up the council directs us to do, however, the word please typically is not a typical sign language.
Can I, the word please is really beyond the government?
We have several other lights, so we'll go to them. We'll go to Alderman Jerry Wright.
I would suggest the sign says please on it, and make it in some formats of, nobody confused that it is an MUTCD sign. And secondly, the question was raised by the owners if there could be a center line painted down the road. I'd like to see that. And also, a request from the owners if they could get their alley at the south end repaired. And I don't think we need to dialogue that anymore up here, but I think we can handle it within staff. And if there's been dialogue between all, I think, five owners along the property, I think we'll get it resolved. But the please sign, please.
Right now, we're talking only about the please sign. We're not talking about the striping, or we don't have a motion on the floor for striping or any of that. We're talking about, we have just the motion on the please sign. Well, please.
Well, okay, all right. Please amend the motion to include please and a center line marking.
All right.
It's going comical, I know, but. He's being polite. I don't even know why we have to have a motion to have a center line painted, to be honest with you, but.
We'll now go to Alderman Ron Weifenbach. You have the floor, if you please.
Please be quick. Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Please. I understand that this is, alley's a problem. I understand that. We have rules and regulations. And if we're going to put up a sign, and I agree with Mr. Tech, let's put up what the rules are. And I think that Mr. Wright was correct. I think that they can come to some kind of agreement between them, and we can move on. I mean, I understand it's all about access and unloading and loading, so I think we have some code enforcements that are in place, or maybe it's even traffic via, I'm not exactly sure, but I think that the more we get into all this stuff, it's just convolutes the message more. And I think someone had a song about this someday, you know? Sign, sign. I mean, all they do is just CYAs. That's all it is, so I'm not interested in this.
Alderman Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I guess, once again, I just, all I'm trying to do is, obviously, there's an issue there, the neighbors are going to dispute, and I'm not trying to like get in the middle of it. I'm just simply saying, you know, just a nice little reminder that people are using, that's all I'm trying to do. I'm not trying to, I mean, you know, we all know what the ordinance is, the people down there know what the ordinance is. Now, they've all been up here and talked about it five times. It's just a matter of just reminding the customers who might be sitting in the alleyway unloading and see a sign that says, oh, please don't block the alleyway. Okay, well, I'll move. You know, it's not that hard, and I just don't think it's beyond our scope of reason as a government, or as, once again, it's not saying that anybody's in the wrong, it's just a simple reminder, that's all I was asking for, so that's my point. Thanks.
We'll go to our city engineer, Dale Tech.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I would be remiss in my duties if I didn't mention the fact that if the pavement width does not allow striping and you have two lanes of at least nine foot in width, we shouldn't do it. That is a liability issue, in my opinion. If we have 18-foot of asphalt out there, we can do it. If we have less than 18 feet, we shouldn't stripe the center line of that alley.
Striping is not part of the motion, so we're talking only about the please sign. So that will go to Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an interesting discussion so far. I think if we're going to not put up an official city sign, it should be the property owner's responsibility to put up the please don't park here sign. I don't think that this is a taxpayer expense, so I will not be voting for it. Thank you.
Alderman Jerry Wright.
Well, if the owners put that up, are we going to tear it down or fine them? At their expense? I don't know. They have no jurisdiction to put a sign up, actually. Tell you what, folks, rather than burn up any more time, Chad and I will talk to them, we'll come to a common sense solution for this, because I think we're close to it anyway. Thank you. Next question, please.
Any further discussion on the motion that's on the floor on the please sign? Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a substitute motion based on Alderman Wright's comments of, to acknowledge the discussion on this alleyway.
We have a substitute motion to acknowledge, second by Estes. Any further discussion on this item? On item 42? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with one no from Chad Lewis. You put up a good fight. I'm impressed. Item 49. Item 49, and we'll go to Chad Lewis. Chad, you can read that one for us.
Item number 49 is Resolution 2015-046 to approve 2016 and written renewal and increase of premiums for City Rapid City healthcare plan. I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Estes. Any discussion? Alderwoman Amanda Scott. Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple questions for either Mr. Jeff Barbier or our finance director, but I can direct them to our city attorney, and he may be able to answer them. Joel, I understand that this 2016 increase to the premiums for all the city employees is 5% across the board.
That's correct.
And has it been reviewed that the current contracts and city wages can absorb this 5% increase across the board for the, all the in-city employees?
Yes, actually, it was factored in to the budget preparation for this year. We had talked about it. The city has a healthcare committee, it's composed of management, retirees, and members of the unions. And actually, in many of our union contracts, it requires a supermajority approval to not raise insurance premiums, so that we don't get into problems with the amount of money we have in our insurance fund. So we had started discussing raising fees several months ago, and then just recently approved it. So finance was well aware of the considered increase. We've actually been able to not increase premiums for several years, and our fund is still in good shape, but we want to make sure it maintains in good shape. So we compromised and raised it this amount, and so hopefully, we won't have to have any large increases in the future. And as I said, the healthcare community unanimously approved this, and that included representatives of labor and all of the city's unions in that as well.
And by the city council approving this today, it would take effect January 1st of 2016.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, may I ask the finance director a question?
May.
And Pauline, the other thought, the other thing on this is, and I was just asking you, is the rates that the city employees pay, is this public information?
I believe it is.
And can we go ahead and have it linked, just so that everybody's aware of it?
I don't have a problem with that. Joel, you?
That would be the only request I'd make, because it is public information. Thank you. I'll yield the floor.
We do have a motion for approval. We'll go to Alderman Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think she asked one of the questions that Alderman asked one of the questions I had about the rates and the, but I have another question about the policy itself. Has there, was there any changes for deductibles or any of that stuff?
No, I don't think anything changed this year.
Does anybody know, Mr. Mayor, what the deductible is for a person and a family?
We'll go to our, I guess we, we'll, let's go to our community resources director, Jeff Barbier. Jeff?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The, an individual's deductible is $300, a family's deductible is $600. Then it goes to a 70/30 copay arrangement, so for medical, you can pay, an individual can pay up to $1,800 out of their pocket, and then they have a separate deductible of $3,000 that apply, or out-of-pocket maximum, not deductible, out-of-pocket maximum, the 70/30 applies right away for prescriptions. Out-of-pocket maximum for prescriptions can be $3,000. So in a sense, if you combine the medical and the prescription, if something really horrible happened to you, it's going to cost you 4,800 bucks.
The increase, was it absorbed by, who was it absorbed by? Is there a percentage that goes to city, a percentage that goes to the policyholder?
It's 5% across the board. So for an individual city employee, the city pays their premium. So if, for somebody that's just signed up, just has themselves insured, not their, not their family or dependents, they won't notice the increase. It's the city that pays their premium that will be increased by 5%. I believe it goes from 404 to 424, I believe. So the city actually transfers, like for myself, being a general fund employee, the city actually transfers $404 a month for my premium into the health insurance fund. That's how we are self-insured. And if you work for an enterprise fund, that enterprise fund would get charged for that premium. So that's how it works. Our health insurance fund currently has about $8 million in it. It sways just a little bit, you know, some months we're a little above eight, some are a little below eight, but, so we're in good shape, but like city attorney Joel Landin said, we just want to make sure, combination of medical inflation, some fees that we have to pay with the Affordable Care Act, we just don't want to get behind and have to spring a 20% increase on somebody sometime. So if you pay for family coverage, whatever the employee is paying toward that family coverage, that is going up by 5%. For example, myself, I pay $478 a month to add my family to the insurance, that amount will go up 5%.
And I think Mr. Landin had alluded to the fact that we are somewhat self-insured, so some of the, there have been years that have gone by that the fund itself had made a decision not to raise the, as Mr. Landin had mentioned to, and I just wanted to make sure that the public knew that, that the fund is somewhat self-insured, so they had chosen not to raise those premiums, even though some of the people have seen huge increases in the last, you know, three to five years, so just to keep that in mind. So the fund has been very successful. And obviously, some of the things that affect the rates, obviously, are claims and that type of stuff, which I alluded to earlier with the billboard thing, when we have claims against our policy, it has a adverse effect to everything else that goes along, too, so thank you.
Alderman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Barbier. And when you prepare the attachment, if you could include all that information, just like a spec sheet for, like, most insurance companies put out, I think the general public would appreciate that. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion for item number 49? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on item number 52. Chad, Lewis.
Is this the last one that's been pulled?
No.
Sorry. Item number 52, authorized mayor and finance officer sign a dendum number one to the agreement between the City of Rapid City and the Alliance of Tribal Tourism Advocates for the completion of the powwow grounds and native arts market funded in part through the Rapid City Vision Fund, I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Wright, and we'll go to Alderman Darla Drew.
Yes, as most of you know, this has been an issue that's been bouncing around in the council for almost 12 years now, and I've been working with the ATTA group to construct a pilot program at the Main Street Square for this summer, so they'd be able to have some experience with what they're going to try and build and create as a resource for the citizens of Rapid City, and art market and powwow grounds for Lakota, Dakota, and Nakota peoples. And I've been working with them, and it's going very well. It looks like it's going to launch this summer just fine, and then they'll have the pilot program they need to, to get our backing, and hopefully, to raise more funds. One of the good things that's come out of this is they did get the money raised to match the funds, and they did go to other tribes around the area, and our reputation as a city has been tarnished with some of these tribes. And by them talking to them and saying, you know, Rapid City's behind this, Rapid City wants to see this powwow grounds happen, we're really moving forward to make it go. And they're surprised to hear that of our community. So we can be very proud that we're part of this, and it's kind of a, not only a reconciliation, but also rebuilds our, our reputation as the fine community that we really are. I would just like to make one amendment to this, to make it up to $25,000, and because we don't know the exact amount that we're going to spend yet, so not to exceed $25,000 up to that.
Is that okay as a friendly amendment, and that's okay with the seconder?[1715.37] Is that okay as a friendly amendment, and that's okay with the seconder, Mr. Wright?
Sure.
Okay, so it's up to?
$25,000.
I believe it's actually written that way.
Is it?
Up to?
Yeah, that, that the amount, pretty sure, that the amount, that we weren't going to reimburse them more than they expended, up to the $25,000.
All right. Any further discussion? And thank, and I'd like to thank Alderman Drew and Joel Landin, our City Attorney, for their work on this. Thank you very much. We'll go to our City Finance Officer, Pauline Sumption. Pauline?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. According to the agenda summary, it gave you options for a funding source, and I would prefer that be identified as part of the motion as well, so that way, when it comes forward, we know how to pay for it.
List the options for us, please.
Are you going to be?
It says vision account, council contingency, or other fund designated by the City Council.
Do you have a recommendation? Recommendation is for vision. Is that okay with the motion maker and the seconder?
It is.
Yes.
Okay, so it will be the vision fund. Any further discussion on item 52? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 53.
Me?
Yes.
Item number 53 is approve award of total bid for pavement rehabilitation project costs, project capital in Pure Street, project number 152239, CIP, um, for Simon's Contractors of Doing Businesses' Hills Material, the amount of $187,923. I move approval.
Second?
We have a motion to approve, and we have a, by Louis and a second by Laurenti. We'll go to Alderman Amanda Scott. We're on 53, Mayor.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Um, may I ask Mr. Dale, take a question, please?
You may.
Thank you. Dale, um, I noticed in looking at these bids that there was only one bidder, it looked like. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I noticed that, um, it listed it as, as it is listed here, Simon's Constructions, Doing Businesses' Hills, Hills Material. Does that mean that we only have one company that can bid on this? Or was that unique to just the situation that there was only one bidder?
There are actually three companies in town that would normally bid on this. Apparently, due to the workload of the other two, they chose not to bid on this project.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was just checking, to make sure that we still have enough competition out there to, to, to make our bids.
Competitive.
Competitive. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amanda, do we need to reopen?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mayor. May I please reopen item number 56?
Can we have someone offer a motion to reconsider 56? Motion by Wright, second by Laurenti. All in favor of reconsideration of item 56, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now reconsidering item 56. And Chad Lewis, would you read item 56 into the record for us?
Item 56 is approve award for total bid of ice sanding material opened May 12th, 2015, to the lowest responsible bidder, Pete Leanin Suns Inc., the amount of $115,000. I move approval.
By Louis, second by Estes, and Alderman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I polled a lot of items, and you know, I let Alderman Louis got the better of me, and I forgot to pull item number 60, 56. I need to abstain. Thank you, Mayor.
So noted. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with one abstention on item 56 from Amanda Scott. We are now on, we are now on non-consent items 58 through 148A, also including item 38, which has been put in front of item 63. So, we have a number of speaker request forms, and we'll go in, in order here of number. Item 63, and while Ted Schultz is coming up, I'll read 63 into the record. This is a request from Rushmore Hockey Association for City Participation and Funding for the Construction of a Water Transition Main that will provide water service to Rushmore Hockey Facility. And you are also welcome, Mr. Schultz, to talk about item 38, which has been put right with that. And item 38 is to approve a request from Rushmore Hockey Association for the City to provide water service outside of city limits. And you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. My name is Ted Schultz with AE2S Engineering. I'm also here on behalf of the Rushmore Hockey Association as the facility manager for our hockey rink. Uh, we are a youth hockey rink with about 360 skaters. Uh, we're growing. We've got a number in the audience tonight. We've got some moms and dads, grandparents, um, some girls and, and boys teams here represented tonight, a lot of coaches. Uh, we appreciate the opportunity. Um, a lot of them are active. They're in band and, and lacrosse and studying for final exams, and so I'll try to get, get them back so they can do that tonight. Um, we, we would like to request, uh, water service from the City of Rapid City uh, through a 12-inch main on Old Folsom Road. We'd also like to, uh, request, uh, funding of $200,000 for this project. Uh, just a little bit of background, we are completely 100% volunteer operated and run. Uh, we, we do have a, a number of tournaments we host every year. Uh, every weekend, we have games from out of state and out of, uh, town tournaments, and, uh, players and teams that come into the, to Rapid City and, and use the hotels and the restaurants in the Rapid City area. We had a good season. Uh, varsity program won the championship again for the second year in a row. Uh, second, uh, actually, the third time in about five years. So, we're proud of that. Our girls team, uh, had a great year also, uh, made it to the championship game. So, we're very successful. Uh, we work with the boys club, and we also offer opportunities for recreational-type hockey at, at the Thunderdome. We're also beginning to rent ice at Roosevelt, um, something that we've, we've run out of ice space, we're ice time, we've run out of facility space, and so we're planning a locker room expansion and, and a water main expansion. And we currently are served by a well, and that well is, uh, very high in iron content, uh, very costly to treat. And at this point in time, we've done an analysis and, and a comparison of costs, and we feel like connecting to the city water system is the best option for, for our community and for the hockey rink. Uh, we really have, uh, a high need for drinking water for players. We actually have no player drinking water right now at the facility, other than hauling in bottled water. Uh, it damages its equipment, water heaters, a number of replacements that we, we experience every year because of the damage from the water. And so, at this point, we, we need the fire protection. Uh, we've worked with the fire department, city staff. Uh, we need about 1,000 gallons per minute to operate the sprinkler system in our facility. And that, that is one of our upgrades, is to upgrade the sprinkler system, add, add, add to that sprinkler system and connect it to the city water, so we can fight a fire. So, with that, I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this, and we would, uh, respectfully request $200,000 for that project.
Thank you. We'll now recognize Jeff Partridge on this item, also a state representative, but tonight a hockey dad. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council and staff, for being here and doing what you do all the time. I really appreciate your public service and know it very well. Um, here to introduce my son Abraham. He's, uh, the goalie for his Pee-wee team, and we've got another, number of other players out, you know, here tonight, uh, in support of this decision. Um, this is an organization of volunteers, strictly volunteers, and it's a group that has, uh, volunteered in the past, present, and will in the future. They put together an organization of hockey, um, in, in organized. They built a rink and maintained it, and they grew a program to offer yet another sport in Rapid City, making our community that much better. I would say that it's interesting to note that this group of volunteers, uh, consists of the only privately-funded hockey association, 100% in the state. So, we travel to other tournaments, and we go to Aberdeen and Watertown and Sioux Falls and Brookings and all around the state, Mitchell. And those are all recreation departments that are really managing and helping make this happen. So, this request tonight is truly a combination of, you know, public and private organizations working together to make the community better. Is the money, uh, for the oversizing the right amount, or is the 200 the right amount, or even more? You know, I think what, uh, Ted has done is a real nice job of just laying out, here's the facts, here's what we have to do. We've got to fundraise more. We've got to go down to the bank and borrow more. This is the reality of what we're doing and what we're making happen here in this community. So, I ask your favorable consideration of this item, and hope that you can look to this, uh, private organization as someone that is really working for the better of our public community. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you not have any more speaker request forms on item 63? We'll now move on to 65. And we'll recognize Kyle Triller from Dream Design. And while he's coming up, I'll read it into the record. Item 65 is, uh, recommendation to deny, uh, denial of request for exception to not install a parallel water line along East Anamosa adjacent to the shortcut subdivision. The recommendation is to deny appeal unless a waiver of right to protest is signed. Good evening, Kyle, and you have the floor.
Good evening. I just wanted to take a few minutes and follow up on the conversation that we had at Public Works Committee. Uh, we did meet with the owner and the owner's representative, and had a discussion with them, and they are willing to enter into a, a waiver of right to protest improvements or a warp agreement. Uh, one thing that I would like the council to consider is, we are master-planning property for the same landowner directly north of this one lot that we're, uh, discussing right now. If, if we, uh, determine that there, there is a better route for this 20-inch water main, and we, we go through all the channels for the city, and, and we, uh, propose and are successful in re-aligning the 20-inch, that that, uh, warp agreement be removed from this lot at such a time. Uh, other than that, I'll be here for any kind of questions that you may have when you actually discuss the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you not have any more speaker requests on that section, which was items 58 through 148A, also including item 38, which has been put in front of 63? Have I missed anyone? Last call. Public comment now closed for that section. So, we'll start with item number 58. Chad Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 58 is second reading of ordinance 6048, an ordinance to revise the membership and procedures of the Capitol Improvements Committee by amending section 3.1, 6.090 of the Rapid Municipal Code. I move approval.
Motion by Louis, second by Wright. Any discussion? Alderman Amanda Scott. Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, just want to acknowledge that on consent, the City Council did approve a planning commission liaison be added to, um, the committee. Thank you.
As a non-voting member.
As a non-voting member, as a liaison only.
Thank you for mentioning that. Any further discussion on item 58? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 59?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 59 is first reading of ordinance 6,009, ordinance to adopt the 2012 International Residential Code by amending fifth, chapter 15.13 of the Rapid Municipal Code. I move approval.
Motion by Louis, second by Laurenti. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 59A?
Item 59A is first reading of ordinance 6055, an ordinance to require fencing flyaways within hobby beekeeping regulations by amending section 6.20.20 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I move to deny.
Motion by Louis, second by Estes to deny. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 50, excuse me, 60. A request by Dream Design International for preliminary subdivision plan. Proposed lots 1 through 25, block 1. Lots 1 through 12, block 2. Lots 1 through 6, block 3 of Elk Crossing, generally described as being located southeast of the intersection of Marlin and Minnesota Street. I move to approve with stipulations.
We have a motion to approve with stipulations, and a second by Richie Nordstrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with one here. Go ahead. It was unanimous.
Item number 61 is authorized mayor and finance officer sign a contract to construction and public improvements through private developer for taxing increment district. Number 75, Between Technology Housing 2 LLC and City of Rapid City. I move approval.
By Louis, second by Wright, and just for the record, there's a number of old houses that were removed over the last couple of days. So, thank you very much to the applicants for, for what they've done. It looks great. So, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion, motion carries with one no. We are now on item 62.
Item number 62 is a request by Michelle Polling of Silver Linings Creamery to allow mobile ice cream cart in downtown area. Um, I'm going to yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded. Do we have a motion? Uh, John Roberts? Alderman Roberts?
I'd like to make a motion and then hold the floor.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to deny.
Okay, you have a second, and a second by Amanda Scott.
Thank you very much, and I, I want to explain the reason for, for, uh, asking for denial on this. As most of you know, a few years ago, I sat on the committee that wrote the downtown vending ordinance. And if we approve this, we're going to have to throw out that ordinance. Um, this is, I, this, this isn't in the intent of what we spent a long time setting up the downtown vending ordinance for. So, I just, I will not vote to approve this unless we, we get rid of the ordinance we already have in effect. And I think that there might be a little bit of difficulty with that, because we have people that already have spots, and if we take those spots away, how do we make them whole? I mean, I know one of the person that, people that has one down there is pretty successful with his spot. So, you know, it, it just, it, it's a nice idea. I think we could sit and discuss it for a while. Maybe we could come up with something, but right now, unless we're willing to put somebody else's business in jeopardy, I don't think that we should do this. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll go to Alderman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, thank you, Alderman Roberts. And that's why I'm supporting the denial as well. When I streamed the legal and finance committee meeting, or, uh, yes, on this one, a lot of the discussion stated that we have a lot of ordinances that are in place for motorized selling of ice cream in residential areas, as well as vendor spots in the downtown area. So, if we're going to now take a look at a cart, a mobile cart, that doesn't fit into either one of those categories, I don't think we should be approving a single action item. I think it needs to be looked at and reviewed and well-vetted out, rather than trying to make policy on the fly from up here. So, unfortunately, government is a little slow, and I think this item needs that little bit of slowness in order for it to have full consideration. So, I will be supporting the denial. Thank you.
Alderman Brad Estes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could ask, uh, I think I want to direct this towards, uh, Mr. Limbaugh, if I could?
Go ahead.
So, uh, Brett, under our current sidewalk vending, uh, the applicant, the, the ice cream shop, they, they could, they could, uh, secure a static, a, like the hot dog guy down at the corner. They could, they could secure a static place to sell hot dog, or, uh, ice cream. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. It could be in a mobile cart, is, but, but, but I think is what the difference is, is, is that you, they could have probably several spots, uh, secured to sell ice cream from. It's just that when they're going from spot to spot, they cannot sell, um, the ice cream while they're in, in, en route.
That's correct. Yeah, that's the way the vending card ordinance was set.
You know, I, I think, I think we have our work cut out for us to look at quite a few things. I mean, we've got, we've got this issue, um, you know, and then, and then you got, I, I sit here and I think, well, are we going to allow people to sell stuff in a mobile cart if they don't have a fixed base? Um, we've got food trucks that are kind of showing up, and, and I think the public thinks that those people were licensed by the community, and, uh, and they're not. And I think we need to attack that. And now we have a situation where, where you've got, uh, where you've got a strip mall. The strip mall had to put parking in to meet their requirements, and now we've got a trailer cooking barbecue. I mean, and, and who's in charge of that? I mean, I think the people that are, you know, do we know whether or not the, uh, the, uh, Department of Health is reviewing that? I mean, we've got jurisdictional things that, I mean, I, I'm not a big government guy, but I think people are assuming that, that, uh, that we've got rules for all this, and, and, uh, we've got parking spaces. We're cooking food in parking spaces, and I haven't, you know, you, I talked to, uh, well, I, I get asked questions about, well, who, did the city license that, or is that approved? And, you know, you just kind of, I, I don't have an answer. So, I, I think there's, we've got our work cut out for us to, to review some of this stuff. Um, I do know that I've talked to Ms. Polling about, uh, you know, for the, for the short term, to try to lock down a couple of spots. And I know that Dan Sefner talked to her about, there are four spots at the promenade that can be leased for, uh, fixed, fixed location. So, anyway, I, I don't know how we go about creating a subcommittee or something to look into all these issues, but, uh, for, for now, I, I guess my hands are, I feel like I have to vote no on this also tonight, to support this.
Thank you, Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can reflect back on experiences I've had up here, and we've had a, a person selling sausages and those types of things out of a, out of a, a city-owned park. We went as far as to, you know, this cracks me up. We went as far to install a porta potty for them and paid for it. I've made the comment at Legal and Finance, and I, I understand and I support John's understanding. They've spent a lot of time in the codes, and I could see where the problems will come in. We could maybe shut down a whole entire street downtown and, and have an ice cream social. We'd probably get away with that. Or if you were selling, and I made this comment earlier, if you were selling alcohol in your cart, we'd probably give you a permit, no problem. And, uh, but I, I understand what they're saying about, maybe we could, you could secure a couple of spots, Michelle, and then we could, uh, you could go from spot to spot and sell. I mean, I, I could see it being a Pandora's Box if we allowed you to travel around downtown, even though we've done it in the past with, with some of the parks and those types of things, and I'm not sure. I think Wade was here at Legal and Finance, and he was going to do some research for us about the ice cream, uh, vendor license, or it was shaved ice cream that they were selling in the parks or whatever, in Sioux Park. So, I don't know if he passed that on to our legal counsel tonight or not. Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
Could ask that question? Could ask that question.
Well, I mean, there-
Or city attorney Joe Landy.
I know there are certain parks that have, we allow for concessionaires in parks. We don't, we don't allow, we specifically prohibit pedaling within the park unless you are a licensed concessionaire and the Parks Department approves you as a concessionaire, so they can approve concessionaires within the parks. My understanding is the, the Parks Department and the Parks Board are going to take a look at this. Memorial Park is not one of, the ordinance specifically lists out the parks where concessionaires are allowed. Memorial Park is not one of those, but especially in light of the fact that apparently Main Street Square and the promenade have four spots. We should probably look at that, but it's probably not going to be a mobile. It's going to be the fixed spot. Thank you.
Alderman Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for Mr. Limbaugh, please.
Go ahead.
Brett, is it possible that she can set up fixed sites currently, and if so, how many?
Well, we used to have a specific number of sites that were listed downtown, and then gentlemen went ahead and leased all of those. So, what we determined when we rewrote a section of the vending card ordinance was to leave it undetermined where those actual spots were, but they did have to meet locational criteria for setback and so forth. So, there are probably a number of places that you could set up downtown. What we would need to have anyone do is go ahead and give us a site plan of the location or locations. We would review them against the criteria. If everything checks out, then they could operate statically from that site or a number of different sites. They just couldn't sell from one station to the next station.
Understand. And then the next question I've got for you also is, are you planning on putting this into our master plan for downtown?
You know, specific to downtown, I think it's a good discussion to have, not just for carts, but also for the food trucks. We're seeing a number of them around town, and when we begin meeting with the downtown business owners and property owners, certainly the question we're going to be asked, since they are brick and mortar businesses, is whether or not they want to entertain having this type of business downtown, since it is direct competition. If the answer comes back no, then maybe we'll ask the council if there's another, other spots within the city that you would, you would allow this to happen. But my guess is that that's going to be a fairly vigorous discussion with our business owners downtown.
Yeah, and I want to, want to say, if we do get a consultant on board, I think they will have the better resources to, excuse me, to do that investigation. So, thank you for the answers.
Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I have another question for Brett, if you wouldn't mind. Brett, I don't remember when we added the promenade to the downtown vending, so I was just curious when that happened and when we voted on that.
Yeah, actually, the promenade, and if this, you're talking about the public portion within Memorial Park. Yeah, we don't, we didn't actually extend that boundary with, for vending carts, and I think what city attorney was referring to is that there are a number of parks where vending is allowed, but not yet in Memorial. So, Mr. Bigler, I'm not sure if he's, he's here, he might be able to give you a little bit more background on which parks you can operate from, and whether or not he's moving ahead with anything in Memorial.
Well, I guess what I was trying to clear up here is I know there'd been discussion about possibly putting vending spots in, in the promenade, but until something goes across this council, there isn't spots in the promenade.
Yes.
So, go ahead. Come up, Jeff, if you would, please.
We recognize our Parks and Recreation Director, Jeff Bigler. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good.
Yes, the current ordinance related to concessions in the park was actually, in order to allow the sporting organizations to have vending at their games and such. So, some of the parks that are available, were available for concessions, were Sioux Park, where we have the swimming pool that has concessions. We have the Ball Diamonds, which sell concessions. So, Sioux Park, Roosevelt Park, a number of the parks along the Greenway. However, Memorial Park is not one of those that's listed in ordinance. So, if it is the desire to allow vending or concessions in some of these other locations, that's something that will have to be amended in that ordinance.
And that's what I believe was there. I just wanted to make sure that something didn't come across here that I missed. So, and I do want to kind of add on to what Brad was saying earlier. You know, on any given warm day in the summer, you can drive up East North Street or La Crosse Street and see people selling puppies on every other corner, or see people selling bonsai trees, or see people selling rugs or shoes, or, you know, and we have talked about how we can get this under control within Rapid City. And I think Brad has a very good, had a very good statement there that, as a business owner, you spend a lot of money putting parking spots in, and then should we allow people to come in without being licensed or without paying sales tax, without paying, you know, and set up on these corners and, and sell? I mean, there's got to be a way that we can, and I hate regulation too, but on the other hand, I don't like to see, the ones, some of the ones that really bother me are when they set up a tent and fix hail damage on cars. How well is that going to last? Who is this, who are these people? Where did they come, you know, I mean, we just need to be able to regulate some of these things, I believe, as a city. So, thank you very much.
Alderman Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I most confess, I, we probably have not approved, is all I, probably should have left my sharing at, that I know the promenade was designed for four vending spots.
It's been discussed.
Okay.
It's been discussed.
I probably overspoke when, I was overselling the deal when I said it was approved. Thanks.
Everyone understands the motion. The motion is to deny item sixty-two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the item is deny. We're now on item thirty-eight. Alderman Scott, could you read item thirty-eight into the record for us? Item thirty-eight.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number thirty-eight is to approve the request from Rushmore Hockey Association for the City of Rapid City to provide water service outside city limits. I make a motion to approve, and I'd like to retain the floor.
Second by Scott, second by Estes, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask Mr. Dale Tech a couple of questions?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Dale, I know this is the first step, because on, on the next item that we're going to be discussing is kind of like looking at the financing of this. And so, to approve water to get out to this property to start with, wouldn't that be, there's currently no city water extension out that way, correct?
That's correct.
So, in order to, to put the city extension out there, wouldn't that promote economic growth or open up economic growth?
Potentially. In my opinion, it provides one of the four legs of the stool needed for economic growth. Obviously, for public infrastructure, you need water, sewer, streets and drainage improvements. Certainly, providing water would be the first step in, in starting that economic development.
And Dale, are you familiar, maybe I need to address this to a representative from the hockey league, but are you familiar with what they use for some type of sewer system?
I believe they're on septic system.
On a septic system? So, there is, there are no sewer, or city services out there for sewer system either?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and then how far out from the city limits is this property?
About a half a mile, I think. Let Mr. Schultz address that.
Thank you, right. Mr. Schultz, if you can answer the question, please.
Thank you, yes. We're about a little over three thousand feet outside the city limits.
And so, we do have connection up to this three thousand feet that he is speaking about, Dale?
We have a connection very near that three thousand foot limit. There was a project, I want to say six or seven years ago, that extended water to Old Folsom Road. They're just down Old Folsom Road a little ways, three thousand feet approximately.
And then, I'll direct the question to the podium. If the city extends this sewer, or this water extension out to provide water to the Rushmore Hockey Facility, you would become rate payers and you're, you'd be paying the monthly bill, and you know what the rates would be?
Yes, that's the case. We, we accept that responsibility at this time. We, we do understand approximately how much that would be. We are self-sufficient, hundred percent, not government-funded at all, and we would pay for that water bill. We would likely come back and ask for at least a hundred percent of a normal rate, rather than, I think there's a hundred and fifty percent option possibly, if, if I remember right. We, we aren't currently adjacent to the city limits. There's a properties in between us, and so we can't be immediately annexed. We wouldn't oppose annexation, but we can immediately be annexed. As far as our drain field goes, we have a very large drain field that we operate, and that's what we use right now.
Thank you. And Dale, if you would refresh my memory, he did mention the hundred and fifty percent for anybody outside the city limits, but I believe the city council passed that and your department reduced that, that it is just a hundred percent now. Isn't that correct?
That is correct, yeah. The previous policy was a bit more punitive, you know, beyond control of their own. They can't be annexed in, therefore, it's only fair that they pay the going rate.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you. I'll yield the floor at this time.
Alderman Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I have some comments on this one and the next item as well, but to start with, I'm just looking at my little realtor book here and seeing there's about five hundred and eighty acres that are currently on the market on Old Folsom Road that are all on septic and water. So, I can only assume that those become a lot more marketable and a lot more likely to tie into a water line if it's out there. And I know there's more water, there's a lot more land down the way that's currently held for sale by owner, and there's some other stuff that would probably come on the market if water and sewer become available in that area. So, I think we're doing ourselves a, a good job of, you know, doing some growth in this on the master plan. Am I correct in that, saying that this is currently part of the master plan?
Extensions outside that area are always part of our master plan.
Thank you. So, I guess this is just kind of a no-brainer, just not an easy way to, a good excuse to get that area growing, jumpstart it, maybe we can get it annexed in a little quicker and get some more, you know, people inside the city. And obviously, I have a lot of support for the hockey that I will hold for the next, next comments on the next item. And, yeah, thanks.
Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that probably a good consensus that we're going to probably do this, and again, I'll go back to my experience, and I, I remember a fellow coming in, and he, I think it was Mr. Swanson who had the dream. He had this bulb, like a plastic globe, and inside the plastic globe was an ice arena. No kidding, huh? It's like thirty below in the wintertime here, and you'd think that, probably the only city in the state that didn't have an ice arena, and therefore, the dream was, his dream for years was to build an ice arena. And the hockey came along, said, man, it couldn't wait any longer. So, they went out, raised the funds on their own, and built that hockey arena. The tragedy here is that the City of Rapid City didn't build more ice. We still have that opportunity. I mean, if I had the opportunity, I'd love to make a motion that we build two sheets of ice downtown on, you know, where the facility is now. We could do it for a lot less than a hundred and eighty million, folks, and the economic development that would come out of it's insane. So, I think our councils head in the right direction on-
Ron, you're starting to stray from the motion.
Yeah, absolutely. I did it on purpose.
Right.
What? Now, you made me lose my thought. I, maybe I could, I'll yield the floor, I'm sorry.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item sixty-three, Amanda Scott.
Item number sixty-three, thank you, Mayor, is the request from the Rushmore Hockey Association for city participation and funding for the construction of a water transmission main that will provide water service to the Rushmore Hockey Facility, and I would like to yield the floor to Chad Lewis, who has a proposal for a funding source, and we'll see if I agree with it.
Alderman Chad, floor has been yielded, we'll go to Alderman Chad Lewis.
I didn't, okay. I'd like to make motion to do the entire amount for whatever that's three hundred and, someone has, I don't have the actual number in front of me at the moment. Three hundred and twenty thousand, whatever.
Three hundred and twenty thousand.
And retain the floor, please.
Your funding source.
I think we, do we go with the point one-six fund? Was that the last discussion? Okay, then Vision Fund.
Three hundred and twenty thousand from Vision.
Whatever the, whatever the total amount is, I don't have the amount in front of me at the moment.
Let's go to our city, can we, let's go to our city engineer for, Dale Tech, do you happen to have clarification on how much we're looking at?
Their total estimate was three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars and some change. Their request was for two hundred thousand dollars.
Correct, I know, but three hundred and twenty-seven, whatever it was, that's the amount I'm going for.
From the Vision Fund.
We talked about Vision at Public Works.
Right. Do we have a second? The amount is two hundred or three hundred and twenty?
Three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Three hundred and twenty-nine thousand?
Seven ninety-seven.
Seven ninety-seven.
If I can get a second to-
We have a second for discussion.
Thank you.
A second by Drew, and you still have the floor.
Thank you. And the reason I'm asking for the full amount is this, it's pretty simple. When this, like Mr. Wyffenbach said, the, this was built privately, there was no city funds expended to do it. I realize it's not in the city, but just because of land, probably and capability. The fact of the matter is, they have, we do a lot for all the other organizations in this town, which I'm obviously a big proponent of, and I, you know, think we should, just it's a good way to jumpstart the development out there, and I see this kind of, it kind of benefits the whole economic development part of the Vision Fund, as well as the quality of life part of it, and infrastructure, I think it just is kind of folds nicely into all those, those categories. Like I said, there's five hundred and eighty acres that are currently on the market that don't have sewer or water, and there's a bunch more land out there that would probably come open for sale as soon as we get something going. Quicker they can tie into it, the better. I know it's an extra hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, I guess, but I know this, this organization's never come to us for money. I know that they have a real bad problem with the water out there. It's, in order to pour a sheet of ice, they actually chlorinate the heck out of it, then they have to oxidate it, so they can get all the iron out of it, so they don't have to have yellow ice they skate on. And they can't shower in it, they can't use it for drinking water, and obviously, they don't have the sprinkler systems they need. So, anyway, that's my proposal, and I know it sounds like a lot more money, but long run, I think it's cheap money. It supports a lot of the youth. The economic impact of hockey is huge. I mean, it's just like any other, any other traveling psycho parent sport. I'm, I'm raising Bodie Miller and Lindsey Vonn and Ted Liggett, not Pablo Berry, but still, I still understand the, you know, when you go to a city, you don't just spend a couple hundred bucks, you spend a heck of a lot more than that, and hockey parents are crazy, so they really do spring a lot of money in this community. They stay at hotels, they eat here, and I think it's just, it's cheap money, it really is. I think it gets the, the whole growth in that direction going down the road, so to speak, and I, I'm fully in support of it, so I appreciate any support I could get. Thank you.
Let's go to our city finance officer, Pauline Sumption. Pauline?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things I want to point out. My understanding, the ordinance does read where the Vision Fund can now be used outside city limits if the project benefits the city as a whole. So, that is the question, is how does the project benefit the city as a whole? And I won't voice my personal opinion on that. The second issue is, looking at the Vision Fund with the stuff that's been approved already in 2015, the stuff that, including the twenty-five thousand dollars tonight, plus the money that we still need to pay to our, for professional services on the Civic Center financing, that leaves about two hundred and twelve thousand dollars in the fund if all revenue comes in as expected, and if no other projects currently on the books need additional funding. And I'm not sure if there are any, specifically, the Canyon Lake Reconstruction Project is the one that hits my mind, so just to keep those things in mind.
Thank you. Alderwoman Charity Doyle. Charity?
Thank you, Mayor. She kind of beat me to it, so I guess that does generate another question for Pauline Sumption, if I may.
Go ahead.
And you may need time to work it up, and that's obviously fine, but I'm curious as to how much of that do you think we may need to hold back for overruns?
I would have to get with Public Works, because I do know that some of the, the change orders with the Canyon Lake project have come in, and I've asked then too, are we gonna be on budget, and I, the indication was that we were not, but between the ups and, you know, the increases and the decreases, I, I honestly don't have a dollar amount now, but I would have to get with him on that. I know there's also been discussion about giving more money to ATA in addition to the additional up to twenty-five thousand to today, so, I don't know how much the council wants to do on that, but I could definitely get with Public Works on their projects.
And when you say that based on projections, are you talking about what we projected for budget, three percent, or are you talking about what actually has been coming in over and above that?
It's just based on the projections that we budget.
Okay, so there could be some unencumbered?
There could be some, but we won't know until the end of the year.
All right, how long will it take you to generate a, I'm comfortable with, number?
I don't know, if I, depends on who I need to get with, if I need to get with Dale, I'm gone the rest of the week and most of next week, so-
Do we have anything in unencumbered cash right now?
For, in the vision fund, we have about one, the one point two million, but we keep a million in there for emergency-type things that come up, or if the economy-
Oh, that is a hard number, that's what we have, okay. I yield for now, thank you.
Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm probably gonna make a few people in this room mad right now, but I would support the two hundred thousand dollars all day long. I will not support what Chad Lewis just recommended. I think that it's very important, when you go into a public-private partnership, that both people bring something to the table, and I think that it's more than fair if the taxpayers are gonna help with this, that we give you what you ask for, not beyond what you ask for. So like I said, I will support two hundred thousand dollars all day long, but I will not support a penny more. Thank you very much.
Alderman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to that motion in strictly identifying an alternative funding source and mechanism. I would recommend that the funding source be the Water Enterprise Fund with a payback on the oversize, or a portion of that, I'd like a recommendation from staff to be paid back from the point one-six fund, so that the future economic growth that's gonna occur going out that way can pay it back with the tap-in fees.
And that's reaching the limits of a friendly amendment, but if the motion maker wants to accept, accept that as a friendly amendment, do you view that as friendly or otherwise?
I'm confusing the friendly amendment.
Okay, well, we're going to then accept that as a substitute motion, so Alderman Scott, your substitute motion is to do this, the three hundred and, the whole amount, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars, from Water Enterprise with a repay for, help me out here, you had, you had the rest of it, for oversize?
Uh, well-
I don't think there is oversize.
There's oversize in this.
Is there oversize?
Oh, there's no oversize in this?
Very well, if it indicated that there wasn't, but, about seventy-nine? Go ahead, we'll go to our city engineer, Dale Tech.
Yeah, I'd like to clarify that, I, I believe Mr. Schultz's paperwork that he submitted indicated that there was seventy-five thousand dollars in oversizing, that's based on an eight-inch water line, for hockey to have the appropriate water flows for fire protection, they need the twelve inches, so technically, there is no oversizing on this project.
Okay, so the motion is to fund it from Water Enterprise?
Correct.
Okay, the entire three twenty-nine, seven ninety-seven.
Well, I would like a recommendation back from staff as far as what they estimate tap-in fees would be, and then get that paid back by the utility fund.
Part of it. Are you, are you then offering a substitute motion to continue to have the math worked out, or do you want to do, try, try to approve this tonight?
We already have a tap fee.
Amanda, it's your, okay.
If I may hear from Mr. Tech.
If this is to be funded out of the Water Enterprise Fund, typically what we do is, is put a construction fee over all the benefiting area, that means hockey would have to pay a portion of this, unless you write them off and then we set a connection fee on the other benefiting parties in the area. I guess one thing I'm not prepared for is this is a pretty big hit to the Water Enterprise Fund and our five-year capital plan for that, and I, I don't, we'll have to take some projects off of there to be able to fund this, if we, if we go with the funding strictly out of Water Enterprise Fund.
Amanda, would you still like to offer a motion?
I would still offer that motion, and I would take Mr. Tech's recommendation that in the correct way to do it, they would set up to see what the cost per property as the properties are developed, and the hockey association would be responsible for their portion of that.
So if I, if I can paraphrase, you're, you're offering a substitute motion to direct staff, we go down the path of the three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars from Water Enterprise, and bring it back to Public Works with the math, so that this would come back to the council, or do you want to prove this tonight?
It can be approved tonight with the water-
Okay, do we have a second?
-math that's set up, with the hockey association paying their portion based on the way it's normally written up by the city.
We have a second.
Second.
So, let me go to our city engineer, Dale, can, philosophy aside, can you make this motion logistically work if the council passes this tonight?
I think we can simplify the motion, and that would be to fund it out of the Water Enterprise Fund and put the appropriate construction fees on the benefiting properties.
Which would come back to the council for approval, the construction fee resolution?
Yes, it would.
Okay, and that's okay with the motion maker and the second, or Chad Lewis?
Of course.
Okay, you still have the floor if you want it.
I yield.
Okay, floor has been yielded, Alderman Jerry Wright.
So under that stipulation, the hockey people would be responsible for their part of construction?
That's the way I take the motion to, to read, and that's how I would understand it, yes.
You know, folks, I, I think we're kind of walking without a compass right now. I would suggest that this go back, I support the two hundred thousand dollars, I, I think it can come from vision funds, but I think we should get that verified through our finance office, because if I understand right, you really don't want another hit, do you?
No, we don't, you know, if, if we're, the way we're headed down the path, I guess I would rather you give us a maximum number that we're paying, you know, rather than come back and do some calculations, I, I've done those oversizing calculations and those, those reconnection fees later, and it's really difficult to, to kind of pinpoint what is the contributing party and, and not, and I guess I'd rather have you guys say, all right, hockey, you're gonna pay this much, I'd rather, I'd rather have you do that than come back later.
But what also bothers me about, we're up here reprioritizing the, reprioritizing the water department's whole program with zero knowledge, and that bothers me tremendously, so I think this needs to go back to committee for a couple of weeks, and if the vision funds can afford two hundred thousand dollars, that meets their goal, I think it's doable, but I, I'd like to wait a couple of weeks, I'm not making a motion, I guess, hey, I've already spoken, so I can't, I think that's where we should go, anything else I'd like is being very responsible, and I support the project up to two hundred thousand with vision money.
Alderman Ron Wyfenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, is it too late to make a motion that everybody can agree on, or?
You can make a motion as long as you don't talk first, which you've kind of already done, but go ahead.
I'd like to make the motion that city pays the two hundred thousand as requested, and it is funded through the vision fund.
Okay, we have a, we have a, a second substitute motion, there's no, no more room for motions to, for the city to pay two hundred thousand from the vision fund, and soccer is responsible for the balance.
They might like that.
I'm sorry, hockey. Close enough, I can't play either sport, so sorry.
Oh, Sam, huh? Yeah. We got it.
All right, now we're even, you forgot earlier, and, all right. You still have the floor?
I did, I wanted to make another comment about, you know, the participation that takes place, and I know we kept you guys here a long time tonight, but I think your efforts, I've noticed, all, all probably worth it, and up front here, I kept worrying about if I said the wrong thing, I might lose my teeth. Pretty girls up here that are hockey players, it's, it's really awesome, so, we appreciate all your efforts, and, and so, thanks.
Right, everyone understands the motion, we have a second substitute motion to approve two hundred thousand dollars from the vision fund for hockey. Alderman Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just to clarify, I was kind of shooting the moon before, just trying for it, never know, I'm obviously a big supporter of families and sports, and, and just a qualitio clarification, I don't think there's many, many organizations out there that went out and built their own facilities without any, any public funds, as far as having skin in the game, this one probably wins the, wins the prize, so, as far as partnerships go, I think their participation's been pretty heavy at this point, I don't know, I've seen these people before, the council before, asking for anything, so I figured it was justified in asking for more money, because I think it really would expand the development out of that area a lot quicker, I think would be, make it a lot easier for people to, to sell their land, and we'd get more people on their tax rolls and get some things going, so I, that was my, my intent, obviously, that's not gonna go through, but two hundred thousand dollars is about the, better than nothing, I suppose, so, I don't think anybody's gonna complain too much, and I do appreciate the fiscal responsibility of the others up here, I get a little enthusiastic when it comes to kids, so, and sports, and I just appreciate your efforts and wish you the best of luck, thank you.
Alderman Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I can support this motion, I, I was gonna make a friendly amendment, I, I thought maybe at one time, maybe we could split it, a third, 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 between, a third council contingency, a third point one-six, and a third, third, Pauline, does it rattle when you shake your head like that? No, anyway, you know, I, I really appreciate what, what these hockey parents are doing, I, I was involved in hockey back when we pumped water out of Rapid Creek, and we hauled our kids to Gillette to get ice time, and, and I just want, the, the kids that are playing hockey now, I, I know they're working hard, but they don't, I mean, there's, when that facility was built, those kids that were involved in hockey at that time had to go out and tie rebar, and, and it, there was a lot of sweat equity by, and there's a, there's just a ton of people that have come and gone that have put a lot of great time into that facility, and it means a lot to me, so, I, and I, and I applaud Alderman Lewis's support, and appreciate what you're trying to do for him, but I'll support the two hundred on a vision, thanks.
Alderman Darla Drew.
Yes, I'd like to also add my voice that I would support the motion for the two hundred thousand dollars to expand the, the water services to this group. You know, hockey's a growth sport, we're just going to see more and more young people participating in this, I had no idea how important it was really until I started talking with Alderman Lewis about this sport and all that you've done to create your own facility, so, well done, and I do think we need to support you and make sure that this goes forward because it will help the development of the entire city, so, thank you.
Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, well, the way I proposed it, I figured you would be less, I figured that your cost would be less than, you know, what you're asking for of the two hundred thousand, I, I didn't think it would amount to a hundred and twenty-nine, but I will admit in a sidebar, I kind of looked over, and the indication in the rough napkin math is that no, this way is actually the better way for you, so, I'm fully in support of this because I was just trying to make sure that the taxpayers are satisfied, but we also get you what you need in order to facilitate your facility and, and encourage that, that hockey, youth hockey, so, thank you.
Any further discussion?
One final shot, these are, I'm, I'm assuming, you know, hockey probably takes a lot of water, so, it's not like they're not getting money, because taxpayers aren't getting any money back, I, I can't imagine what it costs to fill a pond, or, excuse me, a sheet of ice, excuse, but I can't imagine it's cheap, so I, I would stress that they will be paying back into the water fund as well, so that, we're creating a, a very large customer, so to speak.
Very good, any further discussion on the motion, everyone understands it, it's a second substitute motion to take two, two hundred thousand dollars from the vision fund for this amount, for this project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, great discussion, item sixty-four.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor, item number sixty-four is to have a discussion on the road compaction issues, and when I streamed the Public Works Committee, I, I do not believe that this discussion actually happened, so I'll yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded, we'll go to Alderman Jerry Wright.
Yes, at that time, I requested that staff prepare to give a brief synopsis of what we do in road, road compaction or soil compaction test to our distinguished council, thank you.
At Public Works, I promised to keep this under two minutes, I'll see if I can keep my promise this evening. Just a general discussion on, on road compaction or utility compaction on both city projects and development projects in the city of Rapid City, the process that is typically undertaking is during the design process, there are typically soil borings done to see what type of soil types there are, either along the utility trench alignment or under the future or reconstructed road alignment, that testing, preliminary testing tells you what the soil types are and what loads they'll, they'll bear. Once we get into a construction project, then the contractor is required by our standard specifications to do what's called a Ash-toe T-180 test or, or a modified Proctor test to tell what compactive effort is needed on that soil to put it back in place properly. In addition to that, we have testing requirements on utility trench trust, testing for every three-foot depth that you have, you need to do one test for every two hundred linear foot of trench, for example, if you have a two thousand foot long trench that's six foot deep, you're gonna need to do, let's do the math on that, two times, two thousand divided by two hundred, so that would be two hundred tests, if I did my math correctly. We track that very carefully, I've got some examples that I attached to the agenda, one is of a city project, you'll see a handwritten sheet where we've gone out, done testing for both utilities and roads, the test location is not determined by the contractor, nor is it determined by the developer, it's, it's determined by the person doing the test. They go out and pick a random spot in the roadway or along the utility trench and, and take the test at that location. We do not accept any projects unless we have the minimum tests specified per our standard, standard specifications, many times they'll take a test and it'll fail, and what the contractor has to do is remove the work, recompact the soil until they get a, a passing test. In a nutshell, that's how we do compaction testing in our roadways as well as along our utility trenches, I stand for any questions that the council may have.
Any questions or discussion or a motion on item sixty-four? Alderman Ron Wyfenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think that it's, it's a good discussion to be had, because obviously, as you drive through town, you can see that it's either, if we've tested them and they've passed, maybe our design criteria is insufficient, it's almost consistent on some of these new roads that, where they do the utility trenching into the road, it seems to be some sort of settling, and which I can only assume is, and maybe I shouldn't assume, compaction, not being adhered to, or maybe just not having enough, we didn't have a strict enough criteria, or, I guess the question I would have, Mr. Mayor, is, do we, have we gone back to look at those tests on those areas of those roads that have failed, to see what could have transpired there?
If I may, I, I don't know that it's so much that the tests passed or failed, I believe they all passed, the issue that you run into is care of the contractor, and I'm not gonna throw any contractor under the bus, but if you don't have somebody there all day watching what they're doing, they'll try to do things more quickly than they maybe should, and they may have a little risk there that, well, if I get caught, you know, my, if I get a failing compaction test, yeah, I'll dig it up, but there's not somebody there watching them twenty-four hours a day, we have approximately six inspectors that watch forty jobs in a year, so they're watching five, six jobs at a time, they can't be on-site eight hours a day or ten hours a day that the contractor's working to observe every shovel full of dirt that goes back in the trench, and we don't test every shovel full of dirt, we test every two hundred feet, every three feet, so.
And I understand that, but if the utility trench is in the road, and we know the road is what people are gonna drive on, do we test those portions of the road, I guess?
Yes.
Okay, so we, but we have no conclusion on why we may be seeing these failures.
It's the care of the contractor ultimately is what it is, it's poor compaction, I, I think to rectify that situation, so we have very set, very limited or no settlement, is you need to have full-time inspection on these projects to make sure that every shovel full of dirt going back in the trench is compacted properly.
I get, I've been, I mean, separately on the council four years, this time around one year, and I've never seen a contractor held accountable for any ditch, but yet, you're suggesting that there's an issue there.
I think Big Sky is kind of the litmus test for all this.
I would, I would respectfully disagree with you there, because I, I know that those roads had set for a long time, and the city was aware of them, but then it was nine years later, and I mean, I'm not gonna get into an argument or whatever, I think that's being solved in the courts or may have been solved, and I have my own opinion on it, but the fact of the matter is, I've, I've never seen- the fact of the matter is I've never seen someone come back and say, hey, listen, this contractor consistently compacts these incorrectly or did this whole subdivision incorrectly or whatever the case may be.
Yes, the tests that we have show that it was done properly. I don't disagree with you at all that could we make our testing more stringent? That would be certainly a way to ensure that we have more results. I don't know that'll automatically guarantee that the roads will be perfect. It would certainly help.
Right, but I mean, it's considerably difference between the old roads and the new roads. I mean, there's an obvious difference. The whole waviness, but anyway, I think this is a good, I guess, going back to my point, I think this is a good discussion to have and I don't think it should just disappear. I think that there needs to be some other level of a discussion because we all sit up here and, you know, you see the campaign season coming up right now and everybody's like, oh, let's fix potholes, let's fix streets, but yet if, that's the message every year. Every year, it's that same message. So, let's maybe get together as a council and let's actually really do what we say we're gonna do and go after it. Thank you.
If I could make a suggestion as chairs, we have five additional council lights. And if it was just us staying late, that would be fine. But we have 11 speaker request forms on item 155. I'd like to make a recommendation that we continue this back to committee for further discussion. I don't see a motion that's going to solve this tonight. We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Wright to continue this back to the next Public Works meeting for further consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Item 65.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 65 is to deny the appeal of denial of request for exception to not install a parallel water main along East Anamosa Street adjacent to Propose Lot 1 of Block 1 shortcut subdivision. It came from committee to deny the appeal unless a waiver of right to protest is signed. I'll yield the floor to Alderman Estes.
Floor has been yielded. We'll go to Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to, I would like to make a motion on this if I can muddle through it. I'd like to make the motion to approve with the waiver of right to protest and also put a stipulation on if the water line is realigned, that the waiver move with the new water line.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve with the waiver of right to protest and the waiver of right to protest moves with the water line if the water line moves?
Is realigned, yes.
Realigned. Okay. And then we have a second by Laurenti. You can retain the floor if you'd like.
Well, the reason that I'm adding that to it is because if they get into a discussion with this water line realignment, boy, that's a tongue twister, we wanna make sure that that warp is on that water line. Because otherwise, we could have a warp on a piece of property that will never have a water line on it. And what do we do there? You know, can I ask a question to Joel Landin possibly if he could come back in the room?
Why don't we come, why don't we come back?
Or maybe Brett, maybe Brett can answer it.
Okay.
Or Dale can answer it.
Dale?
If we put a warp on a piece of property and we, that water line gets realigned, does it just automatically go with the water line?
No, the warp is specific to the property, but if you're never gonna do an assessed project, there's no, I mean, the warp is ineffective. So, if you never do an assessed project, they don't have to worry about the warp.
Well, except for when you go to sell that property or transfer that property and that warp is on there and they make you put a water line in the ground and if there's no reason for that water line because the alignment's been moved 1,000 feet to the north, that warp needs to move with that water line if it's realigned.
Well, I think if the situation changes in that water line that the warp secures is no longer needed or it has been moved, then the owner of the property could come to us and request that that be released. And I think we would consider releasing that at that point in time if it's not needed. I mean, we do get requests occasionally for things like covenants and things. We filed on properties where when, like you said, they're starting to sell the property and looking at the title work and somebody says, well, what is this? And if it's no longer needed, they come to us and we generally try to accommodate requests for things that are no longer needed and get the title cleaned up.
And then it takes three months to close on that property. I know I went through a few of these, so I was just wondering if that could possibly speed up the process if, if...
You know, I haven't said this for a while, but the warps, they're of limited legal value. I mean, essentially, the only reason we do them, I think, at this point is so everyone is on notice that there's a potential water line in the future. So, because what tends to happen if we don't do them is that somebody comes in and says, well, I had no idea that I might be required to put in a water line. If it's in the chain of title, then people, they don't really have that argument. But like Dale said, how often do we do an assessed project? Hardly ever. So, that really only applies to assessed project. And the reality is legally, you can only protest a street improvement. You can't even protest a water line. So, if we wanted to do a warp or if we wanted to do an assessed project, they wouldn't have a right to protest it anyway. So, really, they're giving nothing up. And in fact, even if, even with the warp, I don't think we could prevent somebody from coming in here and saying to you, all of you, I don't want you to do this project. I mean, that starts to become a freedom of speech issue. From my perspective, the only reason we even do the warps anymore is to just put people on notice that there's a water line that potentially might be going in here and you might be expected to pay it until it gets put in. And then that goes away. But that's pretty much the only legal ramification from it at this point.
So, I guess my question would be, do I have to change my...
Joel, do you advise him changing the motion?
Changing the...
The legal form of the motion?
I didn't, I'm sorry. I was taking, my computer ran out of power, so I was...
The motion was to, the motion was to approve this item with the waiver of right to protest and that if the water line moves, the waiver of right to protest moves with it.
No, I think that's appropriate. That if it's not needed anymore, then we take it off because it would be in the chain of title and we should remove it.
Thank you. Thank you, Joel.
All right. Alderman Jerry Wright?
Say that again. I'm just...
The motion is to...
We're going to, well, it says approve, the item is to deny. Actually, the motion is now that we're going to allow the request for exception to install as long as the warp is signed. Is that correct? Okay, that's the motion. Fine.
Alderman Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could ask Joel a question? So, the warp is filed at the county, legal description specific. So, if later on, the line gets moved to a property 1,000 feet north that this guy doesn't own, we can't, we can't force a warp on that guy's, that's all. But that is, that might not always be the case.
That, I don't think we would, I guess, moving the warp, but removing it from the title of the current property that it no longer applies to. Look, if we move the water line, we need to decide before that property develops. And if that property develops and we look at it and say, okay, this is where the water line needs to go, then you're gonna have to address it at this point, at that point in time. And either that person is gonna have to execute a warp or they're gonna have to build it. But definitely, I mean, if they build the water line up there, then we don't need the warp on this property anymore.
Thank you.
And should be removed.
Anything else? Alderman Richie Nordstrom?
Yes. Thank you. This would be the first time I've heard of a warp being able to be portable. So, please clarify.
Well, let's just take out that you're not, we're not gonna move it. What Alderman Estes said is absolutely right. But what I was focusing on is if the water line moves, then we will remove the warp from this property. Because it wouldn't be needed anymore.
If I can ask Dale Teck a question, please? On the master plan for this area, we've got a loop up there in this area. Is that correct? Waterline loop, we should say?
This water line that we're talking about is an integral part of a bigger loop.
Yes.
Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, right. And if we do the warp process, what does that do for that master plan? How does that affect that? Shouldn't, correct?
It does not affect it, no.
I'm still not sure how I'm gonna vote on this, but is there anything else that I should be aware of on that water line? There's some oversizing costs going along with this and some other factors, if I remember right?
Yeah, the base size is the responsibility of the developer. The city would pay for any oversized cost per city policy. The warp would be on the base size, obviously.
Thank you.
So, just to clarify the motion, so there's no confusion in the minutes. The motion is to approve with the warp and if the water line moves, the warp is removed. Or doesn't go with it. And that's okay with the secondor? That's okay with the secondor? Who is the secondor? Let's just assume it was okay with the secondor. Laurenti? It's okay with Alderman Laurenti? Alderman Charity Doyle?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna say thank you to Charlene Mitchell. I don't know how she sorts through the stuff that goes on up here. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 66. Alderman Wright, can you read this in the record for us? Item 66.
Item 66 is recommend that the fleet management study be conducted by a consultant selected process through the RFP. And this is from the Compass Committee. And Colleen, excuse me, thank you. Colleen's here to talk about it.
Offer a motion?
Make a motion. I'd like to hear from Colleen first.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Colleen Schamath, the chairman of the Compass Committee. And when our chief auditor resigned last December, the audit of the fleet management was just beginning. We feel that this is a very critical study that should be completed. We have not hired any additional, we have not filled the two vacancies that we have on the Compass Committee. Well, the Compass staff, I'm sorry. We would request that the money that would be available from not filling the vacancies of the staff be utilized to hire a professional consultant to conduct this fleet management study, doing this through an RFP. And we'd be willing to prepare a draft RFP for our committee to be, to take a look at, if the council would so direct. And then, once this is, once this has taken place, we do need, we do need council direction to determine the reporting and coordinating structure between the consultant, the mayor, and the city departments. But right now, we're simply asking for your consideration to authorize an RFP to conduct the fleet management study.
Do we have a motion? Alderman Wright?
I make a motion to approve if I can keep the floor for discussion.
We have a motion by Wright and a second by Roberts to approve with the funding source mentioned in the presentation.
Thank you. I think this truly is one of the areas we need to look at and quickly. Question I have is, do you have an approximate budget number and time of completion and that kind of stuff in mind?
No, we're not quite ready for that yet. We, first of all, we weren't going to go through all those steps unless we knew that the council wanted to go this direction rather than want to have the two vacancies filled and have the study completed by Compass staff.
And I have one other question. This will give us a snapshot picture of where we are with the fleet and what we should do. And I'm going to assume, are we going to come out of this with a possible recommendation? I would like this, as a discussion at least, of some form of fleet management for the city of Rapid City on a permanent basis. Because a consultant, this is a living organism and a one-time consultant is not gonna suffice. Thank you.
Right. It would give us a direction going forward as well. We feel on the committee that fleet management and building and the upcoming building maintenance study, which comes after fleet maintenance, have considerable potential for substantial cost savings to the taxpayers. We feel these are the two really critical studies that should be done now. And rather than hiring staff to do them, we feel that a professional consultant would be able to give us more bang for the buck, if you will.
Alderman Steve Laurenti?
Thank you, Mayor. And I wanna thank Colleen for being here tonight to discuss this. At committee level, Ron and I and the rest of the committee have been discussing how we should move forward with the committee. And again, per what Colleen said, we wanted to bring this without any strong opinion either way because really what we're looking at is a pilot of doing this, knowing what our fixed costs are for Compass. We all know what the cost is there. Some of the studies that Colleen was able to glean from city staff where we have hired consultants in other studies, obviously, were considerably less than the budget for the Compass Committee. So, this is really a pilot of what we might be able to do with less money. And we think that we will be able to hire subject matter experts in those particular fields rather than having an effort with an audit. We really would like to see it more as a process improvement type of thing. And so, this is really a pilot of a possible future for the process improvement for the city rather than a Compass effort with a fixed cost, which is quite high. We all know what that cost is. And so, this is really something we're gonna be able to look at once we're done with it and say, is this the route we wanna go? Rather than the Compass effort. And that's something for us to debate and deal with at a future point. Thank you.
Alderman Richie Nordstrom?
Thank you, Mayor. This question has to do more with a wage and hour issue. And I like the concept, what the Compass Committee has brought forward to us, but I'm not sure if this goes to the legal and finance or legal department or the finance department. So, can we use money that has been delegated or assigned to wage and hour such as staffing and that? And can we shift that to an RFP process?
Yes, we can.
But it is legal to do that. Not as long as it's not in the wage and hour part of it.
There is nothing in wage and hour that requires that money to be spent on wages. There's an internal policy that the council set before I started with the city in 2008 that says that departments cannot use salaries and benefits for operating expenses. At the time, there are reasons for putting that policy into place. Those reasons really do not exist any longer. But with council motion, you can use salaries for operations. That's all it would take at this point.
Thank you. I'll yield.
Alderman John Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Colleen. And you're gonna see a little different side of me out of this one. It's been a lot of, long time since I haven't attacked Compass or said something negative about Compass. But I think if you remember in December of 2012, I recommended that we go down this road. And I'm very happy that we made it to this right now. So, I am looking forward to what kind of data we get out of this. And I'm also looking forward to the cost savings. Because from the research I did two years, well, not quite two years ago, a year and a half ago, I think that there's a lot of cost savings by taking this out, putting it into the private sector instead of having employees through the city doing this. And I think we're gonna actually probably get better data. So, I'm looking forward to this. Thank you very much.
Well, and I think the fleet management and as I say, the upcoming building studies lend themselves well to the private consultant arena rather than the auditor, the strictly auditor that isn't allowed to step over, step over the lines into making recommendations and that sort of thing. So, looks like its time has come.
We have a motion to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have alcoholic beverage license applications 67 through 148. We have a motion to approve.
To move.
We have a motion by Lewis, second by Wyffenbach. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 148A is to schedule a special council meeting to canvass the June 2 municipal election vote. And that special council meeting would be Friday, June 5 at 12:00 PM in council chambers. We have a motion.
To move.
Motion by Roberts, second by Wright. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're now going to take a 10-minute recess. We're not, we are not almost done. We're going to take a ten-minute recess. Thank you. We're going to reconvene in just a moment. Yeah, I, okay. Okay, we're back in session, and we're going to proceed with item one forty-nine, which is to continue until June one. We have a motion by Scott and a second by Lewis to continue the liquor license transfer to June one, as listed on the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Public hearing is now open for items one fifty through one fifty-two. I do not have any speaker request forms. Public hearing is now closed. We have a motion to handle those items as listed. Motion to approve by Lewis, second by Scott. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now on items one fifty-three through one fifty-five. One fifty-four has been handled. So we have a motion on item one fifty-three. Do you have any public comments on one fifty-three?
Motion approved.
We have a motion by Lewis, and we have a second by Roberts. Any discussion? By Nordstrom? By Nordstrom. Any discussion on item one fifty-three, on the countryside water system conversion project? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're now on speaker request for item one fifty-five. Pat Braun, are you still here? Would you like to speak?
No.
Okay. We'll go to Richard Tupper on item one fifty-five. Mr. Tupper? Michelle Oldtak? Michelle?
Good evening. My name is Michelle Oldtak. I live at three six sixty-one Serendipity Lane in Chapel Valley. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for this enlightening evening on civic affairs. I think in retrospect, and I know Ron Benell sent a great big affidavit stating our issues with Mr. Derby, making overnight access for families, for reunion cabin, where the chop house is. And I'm thinking, as I read through some of this stuff, and it was quite lengthy, and I'm hoping you all read it, it was the whole history. We've been down this road before. I suspect we'll do it again. It seems to me that the property of his should probably have never been rezoned commercial. It should be greenway. And it is in the floodplain. And you know, we can debate five hundred year, one hundred year, it doesn't matter. It's, there's water that comes down that creek, and it can be pretty ugly. And I feel like the city, because you rezoned it, is, it's really an issue between Mr. Derby and the city. And how you want to allow the man who has this rezoned commercial property, he just wants to do something with it, and I get it. But it probably should never have been rezoned commercial in the first place. And so, you know, let you figure out what to do with that, but don't involve the five hundred families that live in Chapel Valley. Again, don't put them at risk. Commissioner Rollinger last month stated that, you know, what price do you put on people's lives? And I ask you, what price do you put on people's lives? Who ultimately would be responsible for this decision? And not for if something happens, but when it happens, because something will ultimately happen again? Please explore another solution to this grievous problem. Thank you.
We'll go to Carmen Derby on item one fifty-five. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Carmen Derby. My husband, Mike, and I are the owners of Canyon Lake Resort, which includes the chop house. We do have a commercially zoned piece of property. We're trying to find a legal use of the property. We chose to close down the facility as a restaurant, which had a seating capacity of two hundred and sixty-seven. We have come up with the plan to make this into a two-unit reunion cabin, with a maximum capacity of forty-seven guests in it, by far less impact than what the restaurant had at two hundred and sixty-seven capacity. I'm open for questions. I hope that the council, we appreciate your looking at this, can see how this could be a real benefit for Rapid City. This is unique for Rapid City. There are other units in the hills where many, many family reunions go. I'd love to be able to keep more of that business in Rapid City for our own community.
Thank you. Now go to Mr. Haladis.
Good evening. My name is Big Neil Haladis. I live in Chapel Valley since nineteen eighty-four. Professor Emeritus from Salvador Cattasc... Adding any number of people, it doesn't matter 10, 20, 50, to already long list of Chapel Valley residents is going to increase risk. In my opinion, this is simple risk management. You have to assess risk. You want to add people, you increase the threat, you can increase the risk. You subtract people, you'll be fewer people, you decrease the risk. This is the simple, you know, probability that can be documented by statistics. What if a disaster comes, and I'm not talking only about flood, but also wildfires, then there will be more people for Rapid City Fire Department to handle. And also for us in Chapel Valley, we are part of, I am a member of community emergency response teams, and I was trained by fire department and police. That's what I could hear that, you know, don't put people in the harms way. And if you approve this project, that probably is going to increase the risk and who is going to be kept accountable if something happens. And another matter is, as always, that creates a precedence, and we can expect that few years from now, there will be another, you know, proposal for another expansion. I see this as an expansion that would jeopardize the safety, public safety of Chapel Valley residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Benel. We already have somebody else that wants to wait till last, so. Donna Benel.
I'm Donna Benel, and I am a resident of Chapel Valley Community and the Red Rock Canyon Community. I'm here to address my concerns regarding safety of the Chapel Valley Communities and the Red Rock Canyon Residents. The issue regarding adding additional numbers of individuals in this area is mainly an issue of safety, an issue of safety and egress in an emergency. Infrastructure for the safety of everyone south of the bridge must be in place before adding the ability for more people to be there overnight. The city has acknowledged this need by not allowing any property owner to build a new residential home. The city has acknowledged the problem. The city formed a task force made up of representatives from all the valley communities and representatives of Rapid City Government and safety agencies in 2008. The outcome of that task force was no second entrance exit would be built, and no new homes, duplexes, apartments, motels, hotels, resorts, or any place where people would spend the night would be added. Each of you in this room can tell a story about a natural disaster and your own involvement. Remember those as the individual experiences are what are important. I don't know if any of you were here in 72. Were any of you here in 72 with the flood?
No.
One. Okay. I was born and raised in Newcastle, Wyoming, and remember well my fear and anxiety when learning of the Rapid City flood of 1972. I lived in Johnstown, Colorado in 1976 during the flash flood of the Big Thompson Canyon. 142 people were killed. The officer rushing up the canyon with his bullhorn, warning of the coming wall of water, telling everyone to climb to higher ground, he died when that wall of water hit him. His patrol car-
If you could wrap up your comments, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
He died just like the officer died in 1972, trying to warn people. I was a head nurse at the hospital in Greeley. I saw firsthand what that meant. I lost an employee. We lost a hospital resident. My staff identified people by their dental records. The staff member that I lost was found two weeks after the flood, hanging in a tree. My husband was a volunteer fireman and searched the riverbeds. In 1986, I was in Cheyenne with a very similar flood.
Donna, that's time. We had an issue and we've got about five minutes down.
Okay, I'm sorry. The safety is the issue. We are going to have another flood. And what the safety, the plan I have heard that Mr. Derby has is that when there is a flood, because he has a radio that's going to tell the people that there's going to be a flood, they are to get in their cars, turn right, and cross the bridge. That's not what you do when you have a flood. If we have a fire, that 40-some people are going to slow down the evacuation of Chapel Lane.
Thank you.
Okay. You do have my paper, so I hope you've read it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Deborah Watson.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Deborah Watson. I live in Chapel Lane, and I stand here in opposition to item 155, the amendment, major amendment to a plan development, and ask the council to overturn the decision of the planning commission. I would preface my objections by stating that I consider Mike and Carmen Derby friends and that I would welcome development of the chop house. The building is situated on what I believe is one of the most beautiful sites in the Black Hills. My concern, as some of the other members of my community have indicated, relates to public safety and the fact that there's only one entrance and one exit from Chapel Lane and Chapel Valley. My understanding is that we have over 500 homes in the valley. Under the city's 40-unit rule, we should have around 12 exits. We have one. Picture 500 cars or more trying to exit in one lane, and you can see the gravity of our dilemma. I believe fire is the real fear in the forested areas surrounding our vicinity. During the day, most of our residents work, so that's less problematic. The concern is really a nighttime fire. If you place up to 47 more overnight people right where we need to exit, you are further impeding our ability to safely get out of the valley. Now, during the evacuation with the Westbury fire, due to the congestion of the vehicles, my little six-year-old girl and I walked out of the valley. It was about a mile from our residence to the exit, just because of the congestion of all the vehicles. I think the city needs to solve the exit problem before granting amendments, which would add up to 47 overnight guests to the problem. And I understand the argument that we ought to be able to do what we want with our property because I actually had one of the last buildable lots in Chapel Lane, and I was told by the city that I couldn't sell it because there couldn't be any additional single-family homes in Chapel Lane. And so I combined it with my home lot because I wouldn't want to jeopardize the safety of my family or our neighbors. So my request is that you build another exit, figure out a way to solve the problem before you add to the problem. I'd like to thank you in closing for your service to the city and ask that you take the right action and protect the residents of Chapel Lane. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. We'll now go to Jeanette Keck. Jeanette?
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Jeanette Keck. I'm a retired teacher with the Rapid City Schools, and I've been a resident of Chapel Valley for 23 years. This is a beautiful neighborhood with 534 homes full of wonderful people. We've worked hard to keep this a safe family neighborhood. In the past few years, we've met many challenges to our way of life, but we've met and overcome them all. In 2008, Mike Derby proposed a huge resort at the entrance to our valley. This resort would have monopolized one side of a very busy city lake and caused a lot of congestion in an already busy area. The citizens of our valley came together and worked hard to defeat this resort. Then Mr. Derby asked that the city examine the possibility of another exit to Chapel Valley. Rapid City spent $180,000 to determine that the only exit would cost the city $50 million and evict many people from their homes. So the city abandoned the idea of a second exit. Then Mr. Derby sued the city because of this decision, and he lost that suit. So Mayor Hanks asked interested citizens of Chapel Lane and Chapel Valley to meet with city officials and form a task force to plan ways to keep our neighborhood safe. At the first meeting of that task force, I was elected the chairperson. We met for six months and developed a sound emergency preparedness plan. The citizens of Chapel Valley immediately began implementing this plan. In the four years since this plan has been in effect, we have worked hard to make our neighborhood safe according to the directives given to us by the city. We have held meetings every year, and sometimes two meetings a year, in which the citizens were given information covering topics concerning emergency planning, building a health kit, operating a fire extinguisher, reduction of fire risk, and so forth. Besides this, in cooperation with the fire department, we have had two classes of individuals complete the CERT training, and CERT is Community Emergency Response Team. We have a hierarchy of neighborhood leaders, neighborhood coordinators, and neighborhood captains who distribute information concerning safety issues. We were able to implement this system last year when we had a water emergency, and I'm glad to say that the system works well. Both Chapel Lane and Chapel Valley have worked with the fire department to go through all the steps necessary to become firewise communities. My point is simply this: With lots of hours of work, our neighbors have completed everything that the city has asked. Now we are asking for one thing: In case of a fire or flood, that one bridge is our lifeline. We are asking that it not be congested with tourists. While they would be trying to leave with their luggage, we would be trying to leave with our lives and our children. This matter is of extreme importance to us as our representatives. Please help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Peggy McIntyre.
Good evening. I appreciate your hearing me. My name is Peggy McIntyre. I have been, I am a 37-year resident of Chapel Valley. A number of times, I have stood here and related the events of the 1997 flood and the 1988 Westbury Trails fire. Both involved dangerous and chaotic situations for the evacuation of the residents of Chapel Valley. The flood of 1972, of course, was far worse, causing death and destruction at the point of the Chapel Valley Bridge. Our late Chief Hennies emotionally related to this council his experience in losing, excuse me, two of his officers on that very spot, and it was a very emotional talk that he gave. In the planning commission, there was, let's see, Commissioner Jan Swank cited a hydrology report that is not often cited, said that a flood as devastating as the one in 1972 could happen every 30 to 50 years, not every 100 years as presumed. He said, "It appears no one took notice of that except a bunch of county extension agents and hydrologists." That was quoted out of the Rapid City Journal. Excuse me. During a 1997 thunderstorm, this steep, narrow canyon, Red Rock Canyon, became a rushing river that filled with water. It washed out bridges, structures, some roads, and where it spread out in Chapel Valley in front of the pool, I don't know if you're familiar with that area, it was approximately 50 feet wide and 10 to 12 feet deep. This is normally a dry stream bed. So it came down Red Rock Canyon, so that's what happens in a flood. The bridge at Jackson Boulevard on Chapel Lane was cut off by the rushing water over Chapel Lane. I ask you to please consider our safety and not put any more chaos at the bridge of Chapel Lane and Jackson Boulevard. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. We'll now recognize Gerald Sofner.
My name is Gerald Sofner, and I've lived in Chapel Valley since 1990. I was here when the place we were speaking of was a water slide, and the youngest played on that with all the rest of the neighborhood kids. When the property was first developed, it was my understanding that the reason the city allowed it to be built in the first place was it was going to be a restaurant or something where there wasn't any sleeping quarters. Therefore, a restaurant was approved and built. Mr. Derby purchased the completed project as a restaurant and ran it as such. The restaurant seemed to run without a hitch and was going to be kept for his new venture for a 75-unit facility. Mr. Derby somewhere decided that the restaurant was not doing well and wanted to add the four-story, 75-unit sleepover that was denied here in 2008. And the reasons were because of sleeping quarters and in the event of an emergency for the egress. And now here we are. What has changed regarding the safety? Why was the, why did the planning approve it in the first place? There are many reasons to deny this, but I would say the biggest one seems to me that this seems like an abuse of power that could likely be revisited in the future if you approve this because the bottom line is 75 units, not 47. So I would ask that you vote no on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to Richard Tupper.
Yes, my name is Richard Tupper, and I've lived in Chapel Valley for about 35 years now. Again, I was there when we had the flood in, not 72, but what was it, last time was 2080. And during that time, my wife was on one side of the bridge and I was on the other side, and we had to wait until the water went down in order to communicate again. And I was also there during the Westbury Trail fire. And again, that's a situation where they told me at work, hey, in case you don't know it, your subdivision is under emergency, and we couldn't go in or leave at that time. So when you say that things aren't going to happen again, they do happen again. When we had the last time this came around as far as building additional units, I don't know how many of you were on the council at that time, but I know Mayor Sam was on the council at that time, and he voted against it. And we had actually talked to the other councilman and also, and Sam was the one that was saying, hey, don't need to talk to me, I'm against it to start with. And so I hope that you would also turn this down because this is another case of trying to correct a problem that was created probably- to correct a problem that was created probably a long time ago. And when Mr. Derby bought the property, he knew the color of the horse he was buying when he bought it. So this was the risk he took. So I recommend you vote against this proposal.
Thank you. Ron Benel.
I wanted to mention upfront that it's, it always boils down to Chapel Lane against the world, it seems like. This is all about Rapid City. It's about the, it's about the Rapid City flood of 1972. It's about what they call the Black Hills flood, 1972. It's all about our city and, and, and when it happens again. It's about people sleeping, it's about driving and dying in the flood path. It's about paying attention, understanding risk, and making good choices. Here's a quote I wanted to quote. It's, just says, quote, Rapid City, Rapid Creek, I better put my glasses on. "Rapid Creek can swell so fast, the banks are running full and with localized heavy, heavy rainfall, the water can go over the banks. Even ankle-deep water with the right velocity can take you off your feet." And that's a quote from the Rapid City Journal, May 18th, 2015, today. That's what's happening right now, today. It's about Rapid City. The Big Thompson flood in Colorado took 100, excuse me, 143 lives in 1976. It was a 500-year flood. That was in 1976. The next Big Thompson flood was two years ago, in 2013. It took two lives in the Big Thompson Canyon. It too was a 500-year flood. The chances of a 500-year flood is .02 percent. The chances of a 100-year flood is 1.0. The city planning commission in 2008 voted zero to seven against overnight stays or lodging in this floodplain. The city planning commission last month voted nine to zero for overnight stays in this same floodplain. The city council in 2008 also voted to deny overnight stays or lodging. Then the courts up, as said earlier, then the courts upheld the city's right to vote and deny putting lives at risk in this way at this location, the same location. Not much has changed in this area since 2008, the application for overnight lodging. Notable exception is that a new category of lodging has been created. It's called a reunification cabin with virtually no planning or commitments. I put together an appeal. It includes expectations. And expectation number one, Chapel Valley still needs another exit. The planning commission discussed reviving the consultant's earlier report and reviewing the best options. That's on page 21, which you have a copy of. Emergency routes, routes are important. I'll skip over a couple of these. You have, like I said, you have copies of it. But if you go on down, overnight, observation number five, overnight stays and relative safety are terms which seem to be chemically incompatible. They don't pass the smell test. And over and over, we use these terms, that it's relatively safe where the Chop House is for overnight night stays. I should need to mention that a major amendment to the plan development as administered by the Community Planning and Development Service needs to be tuned up and revised for safety, public safety considerations. Derby Advertising Incorporated has urged to consider changing the name of the Chop House when it's with, when and if this is overnight lodging is approved.
If you can please wrap up your comments.
I will, just, I'm almost there. Originally, the major plan development is thought to be something we were all just going to have to live with, but it's not. It's just not morally right to place large families in such a widely-held scene of destruction some 43 years ago. So my research and thought offers an alternative. And number nine, and this is the final thought, number nine is recommended that the city of Rapid City look into the possibility of purchasing this property at fair market value, bring it into the list of Greenway properties owned by the city. There may be help along the way to do just that sort of thing. And finally, this is in memory of Officer Danny Wicker. And, thank you.
Thank you. We do not have any further speaker request forms on items 155. Did I miss anyone? Public comment is now closed and we are on to the council discussion, debate, and vote. Alderman Amanda Scott, could you read this into the record for us?
Item number 155 is the appeal of the planning commission's decision of a request by Michael Derby for a major amendment to a plan development to allow a rental reunion cabin for property generally described as being located at 2720 Chapel Lane. I make a motion to approve planning commission's recommendation of approval with stipulations.
Motion by Scott, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Any discussion? Last call for discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on the bill list. We'll recognize our city finance officer, Pauline Summ.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no changes to the bill list, so the total is that which is before you at
Motion by Laurenti, second by Doyle. Any discussion seen none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No.
We have a motion by Lewis, second by Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Have a good evening, everyone.